Good morning. Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five Board of Supervisors Meeting for San Joaquin County. The time is nine oh two. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, silent reflection or silent prayer, please. Thank you Supervisor Dean, can you lead us in the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Guardia.
Present.
Supervisor Dollywall.
Present.
Supervisor Dean.
Here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
And Chair Canepa.
Here. Perfect, at this time, we will have the clerk of the board introduce for recognitions and presentations.
Thank you Chair, our first recognition is the proclamation of September two thousand and twenty five as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in San Joaquin County. And I would like to invite Michelle Agula, Youth Services Program Manager, Suicide Prevention, TAPE Program, Cape Child Abuse Prevention Council, and Fay Viera from Behavioral Health Services to the podium as we read this proclamation, which states, "September is National Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide is preventable, public health issue. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one suicide occurs every eleven minutes, an estimated twelve point eight million American adults have seriously considered it, three point seven million planned a suicide attempt, and one point five million attempted suicide. And whereas each day in California, on average, one person commits suicide every two hours with twice as many suicides as homicides in California. And whereas between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty four in California, all age groups saw a decline in suicide rates except for youth aged ten to eighteen years old, who saw an increase of twenty percent, and suicide attempts and completion for young children have been rising in recent years. And whereas children who experience physical, sexual, and emotional abuse or neglect are at least two to three times more likely to attempt suicide. And adults who had experienced adverse childhood experiences were more likely to have attempted suicide in their lifetime than those who had not. And whereas San Joaquin County has been a steady, has seen a steady increase in the number of suicide rates since two thousand and eighteen, and as of two thousand and twenty four ranks as the twelfth highest county for suicide in California. And whereas the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program is recognized as the symbol of awareness and prevention of suicide by suicide prevention groups, crisis centers, schools, churches, youth centers, hospitals, counselors, teachers, parents, and youth throughout the world. The heart and the center being for survivors of loss. And whereas suicide prevention requires a collective effort to raise awareness, eliminate stigma surrounding mental health, and promote access to appropriate support and resources to ensure that no one feels alone or without hope in times of distress. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand and twenty five as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, to encourage the people of San Joaquin County to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides by working together to support youth-serving child abuse and suicide prevention activities in our communities and schools during this month and throughout the year. Presented this ninth day of September two thousand and twenty five, Chair Canepa?
Thank you, I mean, it's, I'm proud to be a part of this board because behavioral health has been the forefront of one of our missions at San Joaquin County, and it'll be witnessed tomorrow by Be Well. And being able to help people and give them a new place, a dignified place to go, is an absolute amazing thing. So obviously, I talked to Genevieve this morning and I wore the wrong color because I, the state and federal is purple. And then I get here and it's yellow, and she said that, yellow, it's like, well, I already put the tie on. So anyway, we are very mindful of the people that live in our county, and I think we've taken huge steps to prove that. And so at this time, we will give you the floor so that you can tell us what you're doing to help our county citizens.
Thank you, and I just want to let you guys know that the yellow is, stands for our Yellow Ribbon Program is, and that's the community program as well as the school program that we provide for our students and community in suicide prevention. It was created in honor of a youth who had died by suicide and his family and friends created the program to impact the community and continue the conversation, so no worries on the purple. I understand. But I just want to say good morning and thank you all so much for having us here today. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to Chair Paul Canepa and the fellow board members for welcoming us. I also want to express a heartfelt thank you to San Joaquin County Behavioral Health Team. Your unwavering support and partnership and belief in this work have made today possible. It's a privilege to stand before you and join forces in advancing suicide prevention through awareness, compassion, and hope. Together, we build a stronger, more resilient community. Over the past eight years that I've been with Suicide, the Suicide Prevention Team, I've found confidence in our ability to reach people, to raise awareness, to hold space for difficult conversations, and to empower others with knowledge that they too can be part of the solution. This work holds a special meaning and personal meaning for myself. As a teenager, I lost my father to suicide. I experienced the grief, I experienced the confusion, the silence, and the long journey toward healing. This loss has profoundly shaped who I am and continues to drive the dedication and passion that I bring to this program every day. As we acknowledge Suicide Prevention Month this September, let's remember this. When someone in our community is struggling, whether it's a friend, a family member, or themselves, they need to know they are not alone. That asking for help is not a weakness, but a brave and life-saving act. The numbers in our nation are heartbreaking, the impact of suicide is staggering. Twelve point eight million adults in the U.S. seriously considered suicide, while three point seven million created a plan and one point five million attempted. And tragically, over forty nine thousand lives were lost, and that's eleven person, eleven, one person every eleven minutes. Among our veterans, the toll is even more devastating. As suicide is the twelfth leading cause of death, and we're losing an average of seventeen point six veterans every single day. Among our youth, the crisis is just as urgent. Suicide is now the second leading cause of death for youth ages ten to fourteen and twenty five to thirty four in the U.S. The youth in our community are our future, and here in the San Joaquin County, the data surrounding youth suicide is deeply concerning. Forty seven percent of deaths by suicide of youth are between the ages of eighteen and twenty. Thirty three percent involve students in grades nine through twelve. And twenty percent of these tragic losses are among children who haven't even reached high school. These are just number, these aren't just numbers, they represent young lives cut far too short and families changed forever. But we have hope and there's work being done. Our team is committed to making meaningful impact across San Joaquin County. This year alone, our mental health specialists, and I think many of them have joined us today, were able to train four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three students here in the county across fifteen high schools. Absolutely. We were able to train one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven teachers, parents, and community, community members as well. Because suicide prevention is not just an individual issue, it's a collective issue and a community responsibility. This is why CAPC's partnership with Behavioral Health Services matters so deeply. Together, we are doing the work, we're meeting with the youth where they are. We're listening to their stories and helping them build hope for their future. My hope, my ask is that a community, in that, is that in our community, we keep going. We keep leaning in, we keep having those hard conversations, and keep showing up for each other, especially for those who feel exhausted and alone. Thank you for standing behind this work, thank you for believing in hope, and thank you for helping us make a difference one life at a time.
It is an honor to present this proclamation alongside of our valued community-based organization, CAPC. The work we have done together represents a locally tailored effort to address unique community needs around suicide prevention. September is a time where millions of people around the world join their voices to raise awareness of suicide prevention, treatment, and recovery. A time that is dedicated to bringing visibility to the role everyone in the community can play in preventing suicide, and to encourage all community members to know the signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. Unfortunately, the stigma associated with mental illness and suicidality continues to work against suicide prevention efforts by discouraging those at risk from seeking life-saving assistance. According to the CDC, over forty nine thousand people died by suicide in two thousand and twenty-three. Suicide prevention is everyone's business. We all need to understand how to help others and ourselves reach out in, for help in the face of hopelessness and despair so that we can all engage in the process of building lives we want to live. The board's support of this proclamation is a demonstration of support and compassion for those whose lives have been touched by this major public health concern. Accessibility and visibility of our resources is crucial so those in need of support can find care easily. Everyone deserves access to treatment. The board's continued support of San Joaquin County Behavioral Health Services has helped us save lives by allowing us the resources needed to provide treatment. I would be remiss if I did not end with a reminder that San Joaquin County Behavioral Health is here for you. If you or someone you know is struggling with hopelessness, pain, and despair, you can call us anytime, we're here to help. Two zero nine four six eight eight six eight six, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Those numbers are not on the positive side, so thank you for the outreach that you do. So if everyone, all of our partners could come up and take a photo with the proclamation, it'd be deeply appreciated. And the Child Abuse Prevention Council put on an amazing event and Supervisor Guardia was on the dunk tank in Lincoln Center. Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, so thank you for bringing awareness and doing an amazing public event, so. Yes, I'll be there next year. My wife's, my wife's birthday conveniently ends up on that same day, so it's a. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you Chair, next on the agenda, we had intended to present the proclamation of First Responder Appreciation Month for September twenty-fifth. However, unfortunately, due to an oversight in getting out invitations in time, we are going to postpone this proclamation to ensure that all of our first responder agencies can be present for this recognition. And I do want to apologize on behalf of the board to any first responders that were here today to receive this recognition. We greatly value your service and we just want to make sure that everyone can be present. So this will be presented on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, at nine AM. And next chair, we have the proclamation of California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood, which will read into the record and will be sent up to the State of California, to the Governor's Office to be included as part of their year-long celebration of the California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. Which reads, "Whereas on September ninth, eighteen fifty, California joined the American Union as the thirty-first state, marking the beginning of a remarkable journey defined by hard work, resilience, effort, and the endurance of its people. And whereas California proudly celebrates its one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood on Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, launching a year-long commemoration extending through the summer of two thousand and twenty-six, ending in the national celebration of our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas this milestone offers all California residents the opportunity to reflect on their state's transformative contributions to our nation over time through groundbreaking innovation, cultural leadership, environmental preservation, and the continuous commitment to equity, democracy, and opportunity for all. And whereas the California Governor's Office is leading efforts to honor this remarkable anniversary by celebrating the creativity and joy that defines the golden state, while focusing on promoting civic engagement, uplifting community stories, and fostering partnerships to strengthen our shared future. And whereas Spanish exploration began in the fifteen hundreds with permanent settlement in the seventeen hundreds culminating in the founding of Mission San Buenaventure in seventeen eighty-two, which spurred population growth and development as acres of land were granted to Mexican Californians to encourage settlement, leading to a thriving ranching and agricultural economy. And whereas California is proud to participate in America Two Fifty, a nonpartisan initiative coordinated by a national nonprofit dedicated to honoring two hundred and fifty years of American history, and is committed to encouraging all residents to observe both our state and national anniversaries with reflection, unity, and purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand and twenty-five as California's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of statehood, presented this ninth day of September two thousand and twenty-five, Chair Canepa?
Thank you, so the Governor's Office asked us if we could do a proclamation, so nobody's here for this, but as all of you know, we've been celebrating San Joaquin County's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary pretty good this year. We've been going to birthday parties in each one of the municipalities to celebrate, you know, the eight, the eight cities in our county. And then we also had our one hundred and seventy-fifth gala on Friday for all of those who attended, thank you so much. And I want to give a big shout out to Chelsea and Gina, my Chief of Staff, for doing the great work and Rochelle and everybody else. We had Discovery Challenge Academy there, Future, the Future Farmers did flowers. And it's just, we had ten wineries and ten restaurants, and it was absolute amazing celebration at Hagan Museum. So we have been doing the celebrating in this town, I mean, it's amazing, next year will be two hundred and fifty years of our democracy in America. And I think we tried to celebrate as much as we possibly could, and then obviously, we're going to have the state, the county on October sixteenth to share more of our rich history and what we've done in the past and what we plan on doing in the future, so if everybody could attend that. But shout out to everybody for the gala, the air conditioner wasn't working was the only bummer, got a little toasty in there, but you know, being resilient county folks that we are, we still had a good time, and I think, I think everybody had a good time, so. If we could, we should probably take a picture, if you guys could come down and take a picture of this proclamation so that we could show the state of California that San Joaquin. Sure, we could do that, we need, we need money. No more unfunded mandates, Supervisor Dean's saying there, so, right? You guys, yeah, come on down, so you're gonna leave me out there by myself? So, and then we could take this and say, hey, how proudly California is represented by San Joaquin County, so.
So Chair, that concludes the presentation of proclamations. Our next item is the presentation by the County Sheriff's Department on their fractions programs and highlights of the department. So I'd ask you to return to the dais, and we'll receive this presentation by Sheriff Patrick Withrow.
Well, good morning, thank you so much for this opportunity when we're celebrating our one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary for us to share a little bit about our, our department. This is one of my PIOs, Rita Long, who's put together this presentation for us. I'm told by the younger generation that this app is called a prezzy, and so we're having a prezzy for you guys today. All right, so I got ten minutes, we'll go quick here. We're very proud of our history at the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office. We've been a sheriff's office since eighteen fifty, April seventeenth, eighteen fifty. And we have a very rich history at the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office, as you can imagine, being right in the middle of the gold rush and the, and the moving through to, to get up there and, and strike it rich. We had a lot of interesting characters come through our, our path here from San Francisco up through to, to the hills. And we specifically at our department have a historian assigned since I became sheriff. Todd Ruse, who's in the back of the room and has a table set up out in the lobby to share the history of our department, and it's, it's really cool, some of the stuff we had. I wanted to bring Sheriff Cunningham's rifle that hangs on the wall outside my office that was given to him by the citizens of San Joaquin County after somebody stole all the citizens' horses, and he and his posse went after him, caught him, got the horses back. But my staff told me I shouldn't bring a gun into the chamber, so we'll leave that to the public, so. Anyway, so we'll get started here. So as I said, it's, we became a sheriff's office in eighteen fifty, and our mandate was to keep the peace, maintain the jail, attend to the courts, and serve court paperwork like our civil division. In eighteen fifty-three, we built our, our first courthouse and our first jail. Our jail was over on Market Street, and all our courthouses are where they are today, except for the one, the new one next door is the one that's moved over a little bit, everything else was right there where it's at. In eighteen ninety, we opened the second courthouse there, so I assume they burned it down or it fell down, and they opened another one eighteen ninety. And eighteen ninety-three, the, the new jail opened on Channel Street, and you can tell that was called the Castle, it looked like a castle there. Eighteen ninety-eight Sheriff Cunningham, who I mentioned about his rifle outside the doors, this is a picture of he and his deputies. I wanted to go back to this as a uniform, and I didn't get a lot of support. So we stuck with what we got. Nineteen oh one Sheriff Sibley and his deputies still going with the same uniform. But they were very active back then and were still riding horses at that time. But then nineteen oh seven, we became the first law enforcement agency in the county, and we started driving cars back then. And it's funny that we have this because we actually had stickers made, and if you have kids or grandkids or anything, we had stickers made of this that we hand out at, at events. And, and this was in the newspaper, local newspaper, celebrating the fact that we actually had a vehicle that we could go after bad guys. Let's see, nineteen oh nine, we established our first Identification Bureau, now called Technical Services, and that was by Sheriff Sibley also. And it was the first time that we really started trying to organize and identify people and document our evidence and becoming a little more modern law enforcement agency. Nineteen fifteen, we established our first boating unit, and that was by Sheriff Reeks, I believe it is. Todd could probably tell me the correct pronunciation of that. And, and actually, it's, it's pretty cool, we have a little museum in our office now that Todd has put together for us, we've dedicated a room to it. And in there, we have one of the old foghorns from one of the original boats that Todd found somewhere, he finds everything somehow. And it's very cool, we've blown that at the office several times, and it's, it's a hand pump foghorn from the old first, one of the first boats, so it's pretty cool. And then we had the first sheriff radios where we could actually have a, you know, talk to dispatch or get dispatched and didn't have to run back to. talk to dispatch or get dispatched and didn't have to run back to a telephone or something to get communication. 1947, the Investigation Division was, was formed, first county-owned patrol cars were issued, and a first uniform was established. And I gotta tell you, in 1987, that's about what my uniform looked like when I started in the office, we still had the same hats and jackets, so it was pretty close to what we wore all the way up to about 1990, so that's, that was pretty cool. And then we established the ranks of captain, lieutenant, and sergeant, so that we were having more, more staff and we needed more supervision of them. And then 1949, the old Honor Farm that's still standing out there today, that will be decommissioned here in just about a month or two when we opened our, our new jail facility out there that we've named after Dorothy Heisler, I just call it Dorothy, and, but that, the Honor Farm, the buildings are still standing and still functioning today. 1952 is our first auxiliary deputy class, and 1955, first women's jail opened in French Camp, and that's interesting to me because I, when I came on in 1987, was the first man ever assigned to the women's jail. Now, I don't, I don't know if I took that as a compliment, or, or they didn't think I could handle myself in the main jail, but, so it was quite interesting for me to, to walk the halls of the women's jail, and for a 25-year-old single guy, I got quite a lesson at the women's jail. In 1958, maximum security and receiving jail was opened, and our first booking, and that was our booking right there that I was still booking officers into until we opened the new jail that we have now. And our original jail, if, I'm sure none of you in here have been to that, but it was basically the floor plan, just like Alcatraz. If you've taken a tour of Alcatraz, it was three tiers high, metal feeding tables down the middle of it, loud, dirty, mice and rats running around everywhere. It was, it was quite an old jail, and the new one is very, very different, our direct, our direct vision, direct supervision. 1960, the Identification Bureau is renamed to Technical Services, like it is today, by Sheriff Canlis, and Sheriff Canlis was one of our most famous sheriffs, was well-known throughout the country, and was very, very innovated, and as you can see, let's see, in 1964, we relocated the sheriff's office from out at the county area there to downtown here in the courthouse, and so when I came on, dispatch and everything was still in the courthouse in 87. And, and then in 74, Sheriff Canlis was the first one to get cars equipped with computers. I know in the state, Todd, was it the country or just the state?
State.
State. We were the first one in the states to get in-car computers. By the time I came to work, those were gone, they got removed, but now we're back, obviously, having cars with computers. 1979, we established the Bond Squad, EOD, and 86 was our first SWAT team in crisis negotiations. That stemmed, really stemmed from our SWAT team getting put together because of what was going on down in LA and the problems they were having, and so we established our, our specially-trained SWAT team, and our Critical Incident Management Team was, was launched at that time also. We started our Metro Unit back in 87. When I came on, it was called Cracknet at that time, a lot of drugs, a lot of heroin going on at that time on the streets and deaths because of that, so we started a specific unit for, for that. 88, our Honor Guard, which is just amazing and still is at it today. You see many functions that we go to. And then in 1990, we opened up the Correctional Officer role. It used to be the deputy sheriffs worked the jail when you came on, and then by seniority, you would go out to the street, but then they specifically made a Correctional Officer role, so we have that today, and so you either get hired to work in, in custody or to work out on the street if you're a deputy sheriff. 91, the first K-9 unit, which is close to my heart, Jody Lieberman and, and his dog Adolf were the, the first K-9, and, let's see, we have the Active Volunteer Program that was initiated by Sheriff Baxter Dunn in 1991 also. We call them the Stars, and they're still active today, we'd sure like to have a lot more of them, so if you have any retired folks in your family or anybody looking for something to do, we could use a lot more help. It's a lot of fun, they get involved in a lot of stuff. 1992, the sheriff's office moved out to the French Camp Facility, the big new one you see in the picture there that's still there today, and Unified Court Services was established, so we have a, a whole crew that just works the courthouse now and maintains everything that's going on in there. 1997, Sheriff's Office assumed courthouse duties from the marshals, they used to have marshals that did that, and we absorbed them into us and they became deputy sheriffs. In 1999, firearm serial restoration was launched, that's where if we had a firearm that the serial, serial number had been messed with or ground off or something, we tried to restore that so we could tell where that gun came from and who, who was supposed to own it. 2000, the Coleman Shooting Range was dedicated, we lost Deputy Coleman and his father on the same day, having to do with the same incident. Deputy Coleman was shot on a drug entry with Cracknet, and his father was our range master as a civilian, and listened to his son being rushed to the hospital, and while he was being rushed to the hospital, his father was going there also. His father slumped over in the car and had a heart attack, and they passed away side by side in the emergency room. And I gotta tell you, as a father, if I'm gonna go, I want to go next to my son, so, although a tragedy, amazing story in our department. 2001, Metro was renamed to CalMet, and 2002, our cold case unit was formed, it really was kind of in name only at that time, we had like a part-time deputy that was assigned to a cold case unit, and as, as you know, you guys have supported me, and we have a full-time cold case unit now, and to the point where the, the DA and I have got together and we've started a cold case task force to work with all the police agencies, that they too can hopefully get closure for all our families. 2005, we had the, the uniform change, we went to the blacks, and I was part of that, I was a K-9 at the time, we were wearing blacks, and then everybody, I thought it was an officer's safety issue, it's harder to see us than when we are in the tan and greens, it gives the officers a lot more cover at night when they're in the blacks, so that's why we went to that. What happened? Here we go. Then, let's see, 2006, Community Car Program was launched, that was really cool, it gave designated cars for each of our different communities throughout, hopefully gave them a lot more personal service and gave them that personal contact with the public constantly out there. 2008, OHV, our off-road units began when we got a bunch of off-roads and started working the levees and out in the fields. 2009, Technical Services celebrated their 100-year anniversary, it's amazing what those guys can do now. 2012, Animal Services Division was launched, it used to be run by the county, and the previous sheriff thought that'd be a great idea for us to take it over. It's just been a joy, but, but the fun side of it is the great staff that we have, we have amazing men and women that work in there, and, and we're working real hard with the public to try and get a handle on what's going on with the animals and the homeless camps and all that type of stuff. 2014, Metro Unit was officially renamed from CalMet to Metro. 16, the IBIS system was implemented, that's where we can, at a shooting scene, we can get the brass that was left behind from the cartridge of the bullet that was shot, and we can match that to the firearm that it was shot from. And the same thing with the bullet, we can do the traces down the side, the scratches down the side of the bullet, match that to a firearm. 2018, we started our drone unit. With your guys' support, we were able to get that up and running, we have a tremendous amount of drones, and we're getting some new ones coming up here soon, thanks to a very generous donation from a private citizen in our county. We're gonna be getting a whole bunch of new drones that make us just on the forefront of what we can do with those, and our arson investigating team was also formed. 19, I brought back the Mounted Unit, and now they're just an official part of our, our patrol instead of just kind of ceremonial, you'll see them at a lot of events, and we use them a lot for search and rescue, missing people, all types of things like that. AgNet I launched in 2019, that's our Agricultural Gangs Narcotics Enforcement Team, making a massive difference, working out of our Special Services Division that you guys helped me form, and making a big difference in our community, and our Public Information Unit, Rita and her team. We have two civilian and two sworn, one deputy and one Correctional Officer, and I believe they've made a massive difference in our department, how we interact with our, our public and how our public knows what we're doing. 2020, Mobile Field Forces Team was formed, and then our Civil Division began an online e-file service to make it easier for our citizens to, to use our Civil Division, which is now, by the way, downtown here, right over here at the Big Chase Building, I think it's called, is where our Civil Division, so they don't have to drive all the way to French Camp now. Now it's downtown and people can just walk right over there. 21, Special Services Division was created, CRO, SROs, motor units, our motorcycles that we brought back, and our Raid Unit, which is our Crime Analysis Unit. We formed that, an entire new division, the first one since 1850 that we had opened in our department, so pretty amazing. And then we separated from the Coroner's Division at that time, big controversy at that time, we have a medical examiner's office now that is completely separate from the sheriff's office, and I think that's a nice way to, to do it, it makes it much cleaner, I think, in all our investigations. In 2022, Patrol added our Watch Commanders, to make it a little more supervision out on the street and direction to be right out there with the guys working instead of, you know, being in the office too much. And then in 2023, we started the PIO unit to extended it to having civilians like Rita and Heather that we have, we rebranded the sheriff's logo, Rita does all our branding for us and everything at our department, so that's how we got the new look on our, on all our paperwork and our cars. HR functions were moved in-house, we got a couple bodies from HR, they're inside, inside our office now, which makes a huge difference in our hiring and recruiting and all that type of stuff. And then Historical Preservation Room opened, the one that I talked about there at our office, and there's Todd, there's Todd, and we're blessed to have him, he's, he's amazing. And now, 2024, we, we got cameras all over the jail, inside and out, there were body cameras inside the jail, the custody officers, so we have a good look of what's going on in there, and the public, if they have any questions, we can always go back and see everything that happens. Vocational programs, I've opened up a whole bunch of programs, a six-week pre-apprentice program out at the old Honor Farm, where they can become, get into an apprentice program with one of the building trades, and they learn how to do electrical framing, all that type of stuff, so they don't have to go back out on the streets and break into our cars and homes. Real-time Crime Center, we got a grant on that from Josh Harder's office, and it is up and running now, it's a beautiful facility, and that really helps our officers on the streets, so when they're responding to calls, they're listening, they're giving them all the, if we have a description of the car, they're looking at the cameras, they're helping the cops try and track these people down. Metro Unit got their first K-9 Jack, and he's just been crushing it, he's been finding dope like you can't believe on car stops. AgNet Sideshow Operation, we're always kind of proud of that, we've still got about 12 of those cars left, believe it or not, they're just kind of deteriorating into the asphalt at this point, but that worked out real well for us, and I'm happy to announce that our new plane that you guys purchased for us is in-country now, it's sitting in Utah, getting the camera put on it. We had a lot of work getting it in-country from, it came from Austria to Canada, when we were coming across the border, they were gonna hit us with the tariffs, and we still don't know, they didn't say anything when we landed, they didn't tell us anything about the tariffs then, but we've been working with somebody from the National Security Council who's in charge of the Western Hemisphere, thanks to the help of Ricky Gill, who's also part of the National Security Council, the Gill family out of Lodi and their son, and so we'll see, we were hoping that we don't have to pay that $350,000 tariff on the airplane, but hopefully, since we're helping fight the cartels with it, that they might waive that for us. But it's, it's here and we're looking forward to it. And in 2025, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the new jail facility that will get rid of the Honor Farm. We have our new dive team, which is unfortunately extremely busy lately but is doing an amazing job, our Custody Operations Division. We formed this new Investigative Division inside custody because we're having so much violence and crime inside custody, we have a Special Investigation Division inside custody, which works with detectives, it's amazing. Metro and the USPS, the post office, we do a lot of drug interdictions out at UPS and things like that, catching the dope as it's getting mailed through the post, post office, or the other carriers that carry that. Four Man Cert Team, we have on constant patrol in custody now because of the violence, they can respond and search, and they're constantly busy 24/7 unfortunately in there, but they're doing a fantastic time, that's our SWAT team in custody. Real-time Crime Center, I mentioned that, it's opened and is already making a huge difference, and then of course, we just got the Lodi Court reopened in February 3rd, and hopefully that'll help out our main courthouse and help out our citizens in North County that they have a place to go there. So that's about as fast as I could do it, 175 years, we've been so blessed, we've grown with this community, I believe the, the service that we give, we try and make it second to none, and we can't do that without the support of this board that you've given us over the years, the support of our community that they give us on a daily basis, the support of the CAO's office and their expertise and advice, and, so we are really blessed in this county, I know I've said this a lot, but it's not that way in all other counties. And so I think we're on the, on the right path to make San Joaquin County the safest place in California, and to this point in the past five years, crime across the board, and this isn't playing with numbers or anything like this, crime across the board in San Joaquin County, my jurisdiction is down 36%. So my goal, hopefully by 2028, 29, we'll have it down by 50%, so it's just, everything's moving in the right direction, and we've been blessed, our officers stay safe in the custody and out, so thank you so much for your support.
Wow, that's good.
Thank you, thank you to Rita, Mike Carroll Merrill, she did a good job of getting me through that.
If you want more speakers, we'll have them at Talk Table, too.
I'm exhausted after that presentation. I mean, that's absolutely amazing, I mean, talk about 175 years of growing greatness, so thank you to the sheriff for that presentation. Just being in the forefront, and I know we take crime and obviously very seriously on the board, so thank you for that presentation, so, perfect. Next up, one of the other things that we celebrate in our community is the Ag Report, so, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Next, we have the annual Crop Report, which is being presented by Kamaljeet Bagri, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures, and Hayden Lewis, Agricultural Biologist and Standards Inspector, too. Ms. Bagri?
I just want to say how top secret she keeps this, because we got it in our inboxes yesterday and said, don't share it with anybody, so you have the floor for our top secret information on how well San Joaquin County is doing agriculturally.
Great. Good morning, Chair, members of the Board, CAO, and County Council. I'm pleased to be here this morning, your Agriculture Commissioner Kamal Bagri, and with me today is Hayden Lewis, he's going to be presenting portion of this Crop Report. Located in the heart of the California, San Joaquin County stands out as an agricultural powerhouse, ranked seventh in gross agriculture production in California, defined by its diverse landscape and rich soils. Just like Sheriff's Office, we are celebrating 175th year. In honor of San Joaquin County's 175th anniversary, we chose, unique by nature, to explore just what makes San Joaquin County naturally special. By exploring our longevity and learning how agricultural practices have changed, we can build upon those stories and experiences to better shape our tomorrow. The county has 3,439 farms with 891,000 acres, with the varied microclimates from the delta to the eastern foothills supports a varied wide selection of crops. Over the course of San Joaquin County's 175 years of existence, our farmers have developed their own cultivation and management practices for these crops through generations of local experience and operations. This agricultural variety is a testament to both the region's adaptability and the farmer's ability to balance productivity with land stewardship. ability to balance productivity with land stewardship. So the two thousand twenty-four San Joaquin County's gross agriculture production value totaled at three billion, one hundred and forty-six million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and two, a decrease of two point two nine percent from our two thousand twenty-three total crop value of three point three billion, two hundred and twenty million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. I want to point out the figures represent gross values of agriculture commodities rather than the net return to the growers. With this, I'm going to pass on the microphone to Hayden to go over the top ten commodities for two thousand twenty-four.
Good morning, everybody. Nice to meet you again. I'm Hayden. I'll be walking you through the top ten commodities that we have. Thankfully, this year, we didn't have any change compared to last year in terms of what commodities are in our top ten. They just did a little bit of shifting around in terms of first to third, et cetera, stuff like that. So first is going to be our number ten spot. Silage is still in the tenth place, did show about a nine percent drop, about seven million dollars from two thousand twenty-three, and that was mainly just due to a decrease in price as well as a little drop in acreage. Number nine, we still have blueberries. That one showed about a four percent drop, so not as bad. And we did see actually an increase in the acreage and the price when it comes to the blueberries, but the drop in yield is what caused the price to go down overall. Number eight, we have our tomatoes. This also showed a little bit more significant of a drop, about eighteen percent from two thousand twenty-three, and that was mostly due to a across-the-board drop between the acreage, the yield, as well as the price. Number seven, we have our cattle. This thankfully went up by about thirteen to fourteen percent, around that twenty million dollars, and this was because of an increase in our head count. Number six, we have our cherries. This was about a thirty-three and a half million dollar drop, around that twelve percent, and that was because we had a little bit of a drop in price and yield, kind of affected by the high heat that we were experiencing in two thousand twenty-four. Number five, we have our walnuts. This was a pretty significant increase, and this was largely due to the prices kind of recovering from the very lows that we experienced in two thousand twenty-three, so they're just kind of getting back to their norms. With number four, we have our eggs. This showed a nine and a half percent increase, and it did catch a little bit of the very beginning of the high path avian. So it did, thankfully, it still went up, but it's still something to keep track of. Number three, we have our grapes. This showed a significant decrease. We're still in the section of tearing out a lot of those acreage that was planted during COVID. And so with the not a lot of the crops being bought or just not getting harvested because the prices aren't worth it, we're still going through the phases of prices being down, acreage getting reduced over time, trying to get back to our statistical norms. At number two, we have almonds. This, like walnuts, also showed a pretty significant bump as well, and this is along the same lines of the prices kind of recovering back to their statistical norms that we've seen based on compared to the two thousand twenty-three lows that we were seeing from the market. And finally, we have our milk numbers. It still remains number one, but it did show a thirteen percent drop, and that was mainly due to the high heat, like I said, that we were experiencing throughout the summer of two thousand twenty-three, of two thousand twenty-four, apologies, and the beginning months of the high path avian. It also affected our milk.
San Joaquin County exports to ninety-eight different countries. So in two thousand twenty-four, we have these type top five exports. Number one, walnuts. Number two, almonds. Number three, rice. I would like to point out, all the rice we export out of Port of Stockton is actually not grown in San Joaquin County. We are exporting it out of our port. Number four, cherries. And number five was corn. Our office wrote total of thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-eight certificates in two thousand twenty-four, and the top ten countries by the certificates are Japan, Republic of Korea, India, United Arab Emirates, Canada, Republic of Turkey, Mexico, Germany, Taiwan, and Italy. And the number of certificates totals are right under the slide. I would like to highlight some of the programs, which are very important for our agriculture industries that our office manages. One of them is pest exclusion. Under this program, we try to keep all the pests which are detrimental to agriculture out of the county, and we do that by inspecting parcels, just like Sheriff stated. We also have a canine unit now, which goes to all the parcel facilities, and it tags on all the boxes which has agriculture or fruit or plant material. So we inspected seven thousand six hundred and thirty-three parcels in two thousand twenty-four, along with inspections at nurseries, any truck shipments coming through the border stations, any seed shipments which our dealers receive. We inspected hundred and ninety-eight bee shipments, and these shipments doesn't tell you number of hives, it's just the number of shipments. There are thousands and thousands of bee hives that we inspect every year. Southern states, we are on high alert because those states such as Florida and other parts of the country in the south, they bring a lot more pest into our counties. So we inspected thirty-six shipments there, air freight thirty-two shipments, and for spongy moth and lanternfly, we had nine each. Total of ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-four shipments were inspected by our office in two thousand twenty-four. Another important program we have is pest detection. So if any of those pests come into the county and get established, our pest detection team puts out traps throughout the county. We have twelve different pests we trap for, and there were total of seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four traps which were put out. These traps are inspected every two weeks. So it takes a lot of effort by our staff to make sure these traps are maintained and inspected for the for the whole year. Under our direct marking marketing program, which is to facilitate sale of farm on the crops directly to the consumer, we have eight different certified farmers markets. They are in Lodi, Tracy, three in Stockton, one in, four in Stockton, I apologize, one in Manteca, and one in Mountain House. Pesticide use enforcement is another very important program for our growers. Every year, we issue a lot of agricultural permits to our growers in order for them to be able to apply restricted materials. In two thousand twenty-four, we issued one thousand two hundred and nineteen restricted materials permits, and you could see the stats here that we did a lot of inspections. I would like to point out, these inspections are unannounced. When growers spray these chemicals, our inspectors who are out in the field, they pull up to those inspections and they do unannounced inspections to make sure that the growers are complying with all the laws and regulations. Under the continuing education program, we held eight meetings at the Ag Center, and there were thirteen pesticide container recycling events, which we hold with the help of solid waste under the public works. I wish to express my gratitude to all who cooperated in providing data for this report, including our agricultural producers, industry reps, and other public agencies. I would also like to express my sincere thanks to the Agriculture Commissioner's staff, especially Agriculture Biologist, Standards Inspectors, Zachary Berglin, Emily Kovan, Alma Garcia, and Hayden Lewis, for all their hard work and diligence in compiling the necessary information that made this report possible. I am available for any questions at this time.
Can we get a hand for that? Another amazing presentation by another amazing county office. So thank you so much for that. Does anybody have any questions? I appreciate the great work that you're doing in in the office and all the challenges that you have. And obviously, one of the things is on the the agenda today is the wine grape, the bid thing and the program coming forward at that. And it's just amazing how the swings in the crop report. So we have a board member, let me senior speakers, Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, thank you both. You know, we always look forward to this every single year. And just a reminder that agriculture is a, you know, the economic engine of San Joaquin County, and it continues to be. I just want a quick statement. I know we talked about it multiple times, and since we do have staff in the room and those are not in the room, you know, are watching, that we are getting a lot of inquiries or building in unincorporated areas. And with that, it does come, can, you know, have problems. One of them, like pesticide spraying, you put a church out in the county or a school, you know, farmers are still going to spray, and so there is can be some conflict. So when there are EIRs, environment impact reports, and there, and you do have concerns, I mean, depending on whose district it is, I mean, please notify us directly. And also make your concerns notified to, you know, Jennifer Dolly and our planning commission, too, because, you know, when it reaches the planning commission and reaches our office, we need to, you know, have this information so we can make the best decisions that we can, you know, put in in requirements and so on. So I know you do that, but just a reminder, if you could, and it is important, at least for my district. So again, thank you for all you do, and you and your team, you guys are doing a heck of a job.
Thank you, Supervisor Rickman. Through the chair, I just want to point out is that office is currently working on two different projects, one in your district that we are sending comments, so you will see a copy of a letter from our office, and there is one up north. I'm working with the actual community members to really find out, because they want to establish a school in the north part of the county. So I'll definitely continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? All right, perfect. Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on at this time, the minutes, if I could get somebody to call for a motion to accept the minutes for the August twenty-sixth. A motion?
Chair, can I page real quick before the board does take action? Because this was listed before public comments, I would ask that you procedurally ask if there are any public comments on the minutes at this time.
Okay. Anybody have any public comments on the minutes?
Okay. So, motion by Rickman, and I'm sorry, seconded.
I didn't catch second. Supervisor Guardia, call for the vote. All righty. This time, we're going to move on to public comment. Now is the time for public comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors that are not listed on the agenda, items on the consent calendar, and closed session items. We request that you fill out a comment form if you address the board in person. There's a limit of three minutes for these comments. There's a device on the podium with a green, yellow, and red light. The yellow light will come on thirty seconds before the end of the three minutes with regards to public comment. The law strictly limits the ability of the board members to discuss matters not on the agenda, so this is not an appropriate time to have discussion with the board regarding your comments. We ask that you refrain from personal attacks during your comments and that you address all comments, the board of supervisors, not to the audience. Comments from the public may not reflect the viewpoint of the board of supervisors. This time, Carla Hune, please. And Molly Watkins is on deck.
Somehow, I knew I'd be first today. You missed me for a month, right? Other things came up, according to Ag, and we were actually, two weeks ago, I was up at the Secretary of State's office. We won't go into that, so. Anyway, I'm Carla Hune. I am a citizen of San Joaquin County. First of all, I went, I am president of a group in Lodi, and we had the San Joaquin County Family Justice Center come in and talk to us about sex trafficking the other day. It was a fantastic presentation. Everybody needs to see it, whether you're a parent, a teacher, a neighbor, whatever, you need to know what you're looking at, because people are, and children especially, are asking for help all the time, and people miss that. So Alexa does a great presentation, and I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting on the new office. So, anyway, so, good morning. I've talked about the state mandated programs, and I can continue to do that. As our state falls further and further below budget, and this election coming up does not help, it's going to cost our county two and two and a half million dollars, it's going to cost the state upwards three million dollars to do this November election, and I won't get into how I feel about it, because we'll be here a very long time. So we talked about the state mandated programs of vote by mail that cost in our county about a million dollars. I can't imagine what it's going to cost for the November election, because I've already gotten two pieces of paper on it. Also, the drop boxes are part of that state mandated program. Again, and I reiterate, we do not get paid back, nor do we get any money for either of those programs. And if you think you're going to get money back for the November election, you are sorely mistaken. We don't have any. I don't care what Sacramento says, we are not going to get money back. And hopefully, they will listen if I hope you approve to have them fund Proposition Thirty-Six as the voters wanted in this state, that we can actually recoup some money. But again, we have to stop letting the state run our county. It's our county. And yes, we are a part of the state, but it is our county. And if they don't care, we need to, and we need to step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly Watkins. Glennell Bowen is on deck, please.
Good morning. All right, so we have a new VCA, or VCA, we have a new election committee chairman, Supervisor Dolewall, and they should meet soon. I don't know when they're going to meet, but for all of you, we still need accurate and honest elections. So this body voted several year and a half, two years ago, for the county to have traditional elections, not Voter Choice Act, which is something that the state has. There's thirty counties that do the Voter Choice Act, and we want to be traditional. The Secretary of State did a summary, and in her summary of VCA counties and non-VCA counties, the difference was itty-bitty, so there's no difference in it. By doing traditional, we, the people, get to see how the election is run much better. And that means that we have polling places and we have precincts. And so we can audit in those, and the people that work in precincts know the people in their neighborhood. Usually, it's five to six hundred people. You kind of have an idea of the people on your street, the people three streets over, the people in your area. So therefore, even though California does not let you exactly ask for ID, at least we'd have some idea of the people in your neighborhood that came to vote if we continue to do precincts like we decided we were going to. And then, of course, you can audit that, and then you can also ask for your neighbors to participate. So more participation means that we have more transparency and we get to see the process upfront and in person. So I'm asking the board to please insist in the coming election that we conduct it as a precinct and not as a voter choice, because that's not what we voted for. And the voter registration's office seems to think that she can stray from that, or the department can stray from that, and you are the gatekeepers. So please, put your thumb down and make it go back to precinct. Thank you.
Thank you. Glennell, and then on deck is Stephen Trout, please.
Good morning. The governance of our county and our state are aligning with the doctrines of Agenda Twenty-One, one world government, in a coordinated scheme to exit California from the Union of States we call the United States of America. On January twenty-third, an act of secession initiative was cleared for petition to be on the ballot in two thousand twenty-eight. If enacted, this measure places the following question on November two thousand twenty-eight ballot: Should California leave the United States and become a free and independent country? We no longer can turn a blind eye to California's state leadership, do not only to incompetence, but their policies are driving our citizens to flee from a collapsing state economy and with high taxes and excessive regulations escalating crime rates and failing schools, and, as predicted, a declaration of seceding from the Union of States. We witness emboldening acts of criminal conduct and our law enforcement's loss of life trying to combat the flourishing business of human and narcotics trafficking that are exploiting children. children for not only labor but sex and organ harvesting. The State of New California's Constitution was voted to be adopted and passed at our 13th Constitutional Convention held in Vazalia, June 30th and July 1st this year. This Constitution will be presented to Congress along with a letter requesting statehood as required by each of the preceding 50 states. Why a new Constitution? The existing Constitution of California is also not constitutional. The form of government it states is a representative democracy, not a republic, as required by the Guarantee Clause of the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of 1849 was the Constitution presented to Congress for statehood and approved for our state act in 1850. The 1879 replacement never went to Congress for approval. Instead, it was voted at a state convention by the legislature. Over the years since, it has been amended by ballot propositions, which are laws embedded into the text of the Constitution. Why? To migrate the population to accepting a communism form of government announced as a new country to be on the ballot in 2028. The New California State Constitution will be presented to Congress in the next few months. California State is operating outside of the U.S. Constitution and is in a state of insurrection. Being a sanctuary state that harbors illegal alien criminals and spends taxpayer dollars for their well-being is repugnant to the United States of America's Constitution. The New California State Constitution is built upon the framework of the 1849 Constitution and the United States Constitution. On October 4th, and again, on November 4th, we will be holding an election regarding creating a state of New California, our new Constitution and New California borders. The elections will be held on one day, in person, paper ballots, hand-counted, and with same-day results. We encourage all to participate. Details will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Stephen Trout. Vanessa Barberi is on deck.
Hello. My name is Stephen Trout. I've lived in San Joaquin County all of my life, and I will never live anywhere else. I love this area. But right now, I'm representing the government and the people of New California. The citizens of New California declare that the current government of California has violated the U.S. Constitution and the original 1849 California State Constitution, rendering it in constitutional default. Citing Article 4, Section 3 and 4 of the U.S. Constitution, they assert their right to form a new state following the precedent of West Virginia's secession from Virginia in 1861. Constitutional violations. California's government has abandoned Republican governments, replacing it with unchecked democracy. Violated the First Amendment, religious liberty, free speech. Defied the Fourth Amendment, unlawful searches, seizures. Breached the Fourteenth Amendment. Insurrectionist officials remain in power. Failed to uphold the Guarantee Clause, which mandates a Republican form of government. Our leaders have engaged in insurrection by usurping constitutional authority, pursuing policies that undermine federal law, attempting to create a de facto secession from the Union. The Insurrection Act of 1807 empowers the military to suppress rebellion. The Fourteenth Amendment, Section 3, disqualifies insurrectionists from office. New California demands federal intervention under the Insurrection Act to restore lawful governance, martial law to dismantle California's unconstitutional regime. Formation of a new state under the original 1849 Constitution invoking the Declaration of Independence. New California asserts its God-given right to abolish tyrannical government and establish a lawful republic. The movement seeks to peacefully restore constitutional order and rejoin the Union as a new sovereign state. New California stands for liberty, law, and the republic our founders intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa and Jody Graham on deck.
Good morning, Chair Canapah, Supervisors, and County Administrator Regallo. My name is Vanessa Barberis, and I'm here this morning representing WM of Stockton. I'm just here to provide a quick update, a reminder that at the end of last year, the county issued a competitive bid process for refuse service Area C of the county. WM was awarded that contract that Republic is currently providing service to. And we've been preparing for that transition that will take effect on January 1st. So it's coming up pretty soon here. I want to thank and highlight the county's Public Works Solid Waste staff. They've been excellent partners in helping us prepare for this transition. And starting next week, there's going to begin to be an extensive outreach campaign going out to residents. So I wanted to come this morning, just give you a heads up. I will send each of your staff aides copies of those outreach materials to give you an opportunity to take a look. And also, if there's any questions from your team or your constituents, just feel free to reach out to us. We're really excited to be able to implement the new recycling and organic service, curbside, for these residents that haven't had it to date. And we will be back and available for any questions going forward.
Perfect. Thank you for the update. Julie Graham and Lauren Cardinalli is on deck.
Good morning. Last Tuesday, I attended a legislative hearing in Sacramento regarding requiring the showing of identification when voting in person. Secretary of State Shirley Weber made comments during the hearing. She stated that California has robust methods to prevent voter fraud, and that requiring identification to be shown would be troublesome for poll workers and just infranchising to voters. She stated that when Californians register online, they are required to show identification the first time they vote. Here are two examples proving these statements to be incorrect regarding online registration and verification. A CBS News story. "The Orange County DA's Office Is Charged A Costa Mesa Woman With Illegally Registering Her Dog To Vote In California And Casting Mail-in Ballots In Her Dog's Name." The dog's vote was successfully counted in the 2021 Newsom recall. My question here is, was the dog's identity verified when he voted for the first time? Obviously not. So how did Skippy's vote get counted? I guess the system that the Secretary of State touts isn't as foolproof as she thought. As it turns out, the only reason this woman was charged with the crime was because she bragged about it online, not because the ROV caught it. The question for our county is this: Is our register of voters identifying the identity of all first-time voters? How many times does this happen? You can register your cat, goat, horse, chicken to vote, and a live ballot is mailed to them. How are we preventing this? Think of the potential for fraud, and we've got a very short notice hurried election coming up. Regarding the lack of identification when voting in person. When I went to vote in person at a precinct in the last election, I was asked for my first name and my last, the last four letters of my last name. I told her Jody, G-R-A-H, spelling it out. The poll worker turned her iPad slightly towards me and said, "Is this you?" I only saw J-O-D-I. I said, "That's not how I spell my name." She then showed me another screenshot, and it was me. So if the poll worker hadn't turned the screen, I would have voted for Jody G-R-A-H somewhere else in the county, and if she had turned in a mail ballot that day or gone to vote, she would have been told she had already voted and must have forgotten about it. And I wouldn't have the voting history. The system is flawed. Our county needs to do better. Perhaps have the voter write out their entire name for the poll worker. Do you know how many R-O-D-R Rodriguez, or J-O-H-N Johnson, or S-M-I-T Smith there are in this county? We can't do less than what the esteemed Shirley Weber requires, but we can certainly do more to protect the votes in our county. I implore each of you to go in person in November's election, spend some time at the precinct witnessing how our elections are run. It may prove to be a very eye-opening experience for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Cardinalli, and then Susan Burns is on deck.
The first commandment God gave to us was to be fruitful and multiply. And for the past 175 years in our county, the Constitution is the law that was given to us by our Creator to protect the divine order and all of its inhabitants. We are free to create a life for ourselves and our families, and now we come to today. To paraphrase Pete Hegseth, the Secretary of War, recently, he said that any shipment of a drug that poisons America is an imminent threat to national security. Secondarily, this medical product that was being used to combat COVID-19 as a cannon measure has corrupted the genes of everyone who has taken it. Normal cellular operation is not working, and it inserts itself into our genome. It creates biologic havoc. The drug meets all the requirements to be a Class IV poison, a Class I drug recall, and a biological weapon of mass destruction, and constitutes a direct to our timeline of our COVID response and recovery. As we are still in this recovery, this notification shall prove to be your emergency notification. All of this information that I have given you is readily available through the analysis of the Pfizer papers, which they tried to hide for 75 years. There was serious harm, injury, and death found in the trial phases. Criminal evils were used, and everyone is standing by doing nothing. You have now been given notification of a work stoppage in your area. It's a crippling effect. 65% of our local population was poisoned. The direction and the permanent deformation of DNA and cellular function is a serious and dangerous threat to our local people. It is an immediate threat. It causes cancers, strokes, multiple organ failure, heart damage, creates proteins that block normal cell function. And most heinously, it cripples the ability for people to reproduce. When a mom feeds her child, the protein goes into the child, and the child dies. CDC is currently investigating the 9,000 murders of children by the shots. What do they need to investigate? These are extrajudicial executions by the state of California in your contracted PHEP agreements. Every one of you gentlemen has somebody in your life that you care about. County Council continues to allow you to not follow the law, which is when you are given an emergency notification, you can call an emergency meeting, and you can stop work on the scope of works in the PHEP plan. Bill Gates sat next to the President of the United States the other day, and he says he's going to spend the second part of his career innovating seeds of evil and vaccines. He's going after Africa. You should call an emergency meeting and follow the law.
Thank you. Suzanne, go ahead and speak. I'm going to allow you to speak on the bid, but it's part of the original agenda, so they said that you have to leave, so I will allow this.
Suzanne Burns, Jesse's Grove Winery, I think I'll wait.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
May I wait till later?
Oh, you can wait, but if you want to speak now, I mean, it's just, it's-
I think I'll wait till later.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Oh, they said that you had to leave, so.
Oh, no, not me.
Okay, okay.
I'm here.
We'll save that for later. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak? This is the last of the comment cards.
Good morning, Supervisors. Andrew Janais, Executive Director, San Joaquin Farm Bureau. I just want to thank you for your support of Ag and Rural Communities. With the crop report announced today, unfortunately, we're seeing a drop again of around $100 million. Last year, we saw a drop of about the same, so we're down $200 million in the past two years. That is $200 million that isn't going to employees. That's $200 million that isn't making its way into our economy. That's $200 million that isn't providing services that are being taxed to get back to our county. So, good to have it. We're a great county, but some disturbing facts in there when you dig in. I want to thank our Ag Commissioner Kamal for the work she does and her great staff, working with farmers, ranchers out in our county every day. I want to thank your support of Kamal. The Sheriff's Department was here earlier, particularly their AgNet group does some really great work, and so thank you for supporting them. Supervisor Rickman mentioned it, but, you know, as we look into siding, as we're looking into stuff for, whether it's a school, whether it is a religious assembly, whether it is unzoned subdivisions, and really, the unplanned growth that they provide, just be very careful, because every one of those impacts every farm around them. With schools, you're looking at, you know, a half mile to a mile impacts on what they can and can't do, times of day, you know, times of year, they can have activities. So just, we need to be very careful when we're doing that siding. We need to make sure that when growth is happening, it's done in a planned and thoughtful way. And just, when those things come before you, please, take that in mind, because it really does impact all the growers, the farmers, the ranchers, the businesses around there that are already suffering with less income. And as we all know, expenses have not gone down over the past couple of years, and they continue to increase. So that is leading to this loss of farmland, leading to the loss of farms here in this county. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you again. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak that hasn't fallen out of card? Seeing none, we're going to move on. We're going to move, probation is asked, that we move to discussion item number five, the Anchar Labs in probation, to before consent. So at this time, we'll have the presentation from Chief Jackson and Company.
All right, it's all lit. Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board, C.A. Regallo, Counselor Kernan, Madam Clerk, Steve Jackson, Probation Chief. Really excited this morning to provide you an update on a contract that your board approved in October of last year to build a homeless app. And second, immediately following the update on our homeless app, we will have a SJ Cares update from our Deputy Chief over the SJ Cares Program, Jamie Grant. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Pinaki Saha and Craig Tanner of Anchar Labs.
Thank you once again, Board of Supervisors, for giving us the opportunity to present the development so far. We started this project, Shine, Supporting Homeless to Interact, Navigate, and Engage, this whole enterprise application platform in December last year, after we got approved on the budget in October. And then, we want to come over here to give you an update on how far we have accomplished over the last six months, which has been a pretty interesting and very exciting journey, and we have accomplished several things we would like to walk you through. If you can scroll down, or, oh, okay. So, how was the award before Shine for homelessness in San Joaquin County? There's a technical aspect to it, there's a social aspect to it. I'll go through both in combination. And starting with the technical side of it, everything today's award is very much highly digitized, and digital aspect of technology and its integration with society is helping communities to become better. And that's what we kind of envisioned bringing into San Joaquin County with our expertise. So when we got in there, we saw certain things that were needed to be mitigated. One of them were data were in significant silos, they were in analog format. People were tracking data from a standpoint of spreadsheets and writing in scribbles and papers. There were also limited visibility on shelters, because, and encampments, because you were seeing encampments across the city and its borders of the county. There are a lot of these encampments popping left and right, going away, coming back in, and there are people moving into it and coming out of it, which also instilling significant degrees of risks associated with those encampments and people coming into those encampments. And there is no visual ability to track it from a digital standpoint of what's happening inside those encampments. There was no single unified platform of communication. Officers and other individuals and people on the ground, they're using different kind of channels. They're using text messages, they're using WhatsApp, they're using some proprietary app. But there was no central repository of information where they could approach and make decision based on that information that passing through. There was a limited digital approach towards data. Data was distributed, as I mentioned, extremely kind of in analog states, and they were not able to be gleaned into for insights, because they are not available to the digital interface. And there are certain compliance gaps with the HUD and state mandates from tracking homelessness, how many beds available in different shelters. There was no real-time bed counts. There is only one pit count that happens once in a year, in February, end of February, and that- and that data is then kind of extrapolated across the whole year, across different segments of the county where people kind of do some tentative assessment of how many beds will be available in those shelters. And then it is a costly and slow process because of being analog. So why Shine? There are close to 5,000 individuals that are currently unhoused in San Joaquin County. We have found that over the last year or so, 165-plus people have been tracked in some degree, some shape or form of digitization, Excel spreadsheets and things like that. So when we onboarded this whole concept of bringing digital and the enterprise application and the mobility on it, we visualized that Shine will bring real-time visibility, coordination, and verifiable data to the field, to the field officers. Again, I'm not going to go through the depth of all these things for the respective time for all parties, but this PDF will be available for you to review later. So what we did is that as a first approach to it, we realized that technology cannot solve all the problems if I stay, if we stay inside kind of closed doors. So we decided to work with San Joaquin County Probation and Sheriff's Office and behavioral side of it to walk into ride-along and go and evaluate and visualize that what really happens for the field officers when they encounters homeless people in their habitat. So when we came back from it, we realized that the certain assumptions that we made are completely wrong when we saw the reality of that. From a standpoint of identity resolution, we figured out that identity resolution is just not a government ID because there is a way to track your physical traits, mental behavior aspects of it, and even how they're talking and things like that. So we have to bring that into the picture as well. Record entry, we thought that all record entries happen in text, but there's so much verbal communication going on at that point, and officers are also kind of engaged in public safety, so they're not always writing notes all the time and they don't have all the time in the world. So how we can bring this verbal communication and digitize that into the app real-time while they're speaking to it. There are interaction modalities. We thought that there's always an officer to individual engagement going on, and then we found out, no, the officers engage with the groups. They engage with the kids, they engage with minors, they engage with family members or other friends who are hanging out in the same encampment. Location coordinates, we thought that it's all static, wherever people sit over there and they stay over there for a long time. We realized, no, the people move from one encampment to other encampment. Encampments themselves become a habitat, and they keep on moving around that. And then the biggest part was the risk level. We started this application thinking that it would be more of a data, kind of a tracking enablement system, but we realized that because of public safety involved in here, there's a significant amount of risk that gets associated with the individual as well as the encampment. And there's a significant, there's a high level of correlation between who gets into that tent and how long they stay there, and how that tent ends up becoming highly risky. So those risk fluctuations, we enabled, we figured out that we have to track that and bring into the system. In last six months, we have gone through ride-alongs, we have visited encampments, we have built, we have looked at the intake process with our SJCE partners and staffs. Then we have built four mobile apps. There is a Shine app iOS version and Android version. There's a pit count app also that we have built that now calculates, now collects real-time pit count data from all the shelters once enabled. And then we also delivered a role-based central user management platform for secure and discretionary access, so that, you know, only certain people can see certain silos of data, if it's mental behavioral, if it's legal, if it's medical onsite, those data should be visible to people who are, haven't been given the access to it. And then we also transitioned from manual spreadsheets for building enterprise-level system. Shine benefits probation. Shine empowers probation with situational awareness, service coordination, and data-driven decisions. Our key, I would say the goal of this entire project is to make, help the probation department and San Joaquin County make better decisions by gleaning through the data that's collected digitally, and we are getting there very close. Now, just to give you a very highlight over the application that we have built, there are a couple of aspects of it, but I'll kind of focus on three key areas. So one is the shelter management innovation. Right now, there are close to 21 or so shelters, CBOs managing them, and there are a lot of bed counts, and officers in field, they send the homeless people to those shelters. Sometimes these homeless people come back out of the shelter, then they come back again in there, and beds available, beds not available. So we brought this system to track those shelters and manage that bed counts and availability, and integrate that effort with the police and sheriff's office and probation to see that how the right people at the right time can be engaged with those shelters and brought over there for support. The next one is risk management and safety, which is humongous. I think, we believe that's the biggest thing that we have so far accomplished, is to identify risk to an individual and associate risk to an encampment. Because there have been incidents where officers have been in those encampments, and they have found that the homeless person pulling out a BB gun and it looks exactly like a Glock. And, and there have been instances that those are threat for safety for the officers on the field. Now, it's, this system is being built like a soft case management tool even, because when the officers engage and they evaluate and they see those systems, that they see those evidence, they log those evidence in those, attached to those encampments, and those individuals who are sitting in those encampments at that point of time. So when a call happens, when somebody has to go back to that encampment or that vicinity, they can look up the system and evaluate that what has been logged so far. So that mitigates risk for them because they know how to engage the first go. And then partnership and governance. We have worked with ISD, Jim Brown, Ralph Cordero, and Tim Willett's team to build this mobile application. We have built app publishing infrastructure and a governance framework for the probation department and IT, and we have onboarded the Sheriff's Office, probation behavioral health, public health, SJ Cares, COC Shelters coming onboard, and other third-party partners and CBOs in here. Timelines and milestones, December 2024, as I mentioned, we did the project kickoff. February 25, we went, started the ride-alongs for data intake study. March, we started designing the user experience, like how officers will look into that app and communicate with the homeless person in front of them, and how we can make this process of onboarding data much easier. Then April, we started application development. July, the Shine app testing and user acceptance testing started with the probation department's officers and sheriff's office. And then August 2025, shelter app testing has started already. We plan to go live this month, September 2025, first ever migration of analog homeless data to digital with 165 individuals pre-onboarded data. That's coming from probation, and then we'll start bringing the universe into this digital system. And then December 2025, when the project actually coming to an end, in early January, we'll be building all the backend reporting and the data analytics dashboard to glean insights and make decisions based on that. Now, as far, I would like to give you some perspective of where we are heading with the data. And I'll kind of scan through this a little bit quicker, but I'll give you a high-level insights on what this is planning to do. So if you look at it on this graph, the data that we are collecting by date, we are looking at how many times and one individual and interacting, interaction happening with an officer. So this gives you a time lapse picture of how many individuals are contacting on a month basis with the officers, and that gives you a flux that how many homeless person are in the county, in certain districts, in certain county latitude and longitude, and you can evaluate that where the intensity and population growth's happening around that and where the engagement is happening more. Then there is client unshelter since, which is a huge data because it's, have incredible value because officers go and ask them, how long had you been unsheltered? And we find that in certain aspects, based on how many months we keep on progressing with that individual, we see certain people coming into the picture and saying that I have been unsheltered for five months, I have been unsheltered for two years, and they go back into a shelter and then again come back, or they go back to a housing facility and they again come back to the street because there is some mental behavior and other aspects of it. So we are tracking those kind of analytics to evaluate that where the decision-making and rather investment from your services standpoint you can provide based on who have been unsheltered longer. Because there are tendencies that the correlation, high correlation, more they stay unsheltered, they tend to be lesser and lesser to go back to a shelter or normal life. Then we're also looking at locations around different areas of the county, that where we are finding more people, where they're having more interactions with officers, where officers are being called upon to go and visit. There are certain aspect, areas of levees, there's certain areas under the viaduct, there's certain areas in a kind of swamp area where we are seeing certain population growth happening. And there's a lot of sometimes tfts of copper and things like that. There are a lot of stuff moving around that officers are already tracking, but now it's digital. So they're using this information to evaluate that who is at a high-risk level, low-risk level, who is trending and otherwise. We're also tracking services offered by actions taken by month. A lot of people from a standpoint of ROIs and from a SJ Care standpoint, we're bringing that data onboarded, that what kind of services have been offered, how many times they denied those services, what kind of services were being offered, and whether they are kind of engaging with the field officers to take those services, or they're just high utilizers. They're keeping on saying no, and no, and no, but they're kind of drifting towards getting more of these services, but they don't want to engage. So these gives, these kind of data gives us the ability to understand that where your investment is going from a county standpoint, where the money is being put in more or should be shifted to this kind of services versus that kind of services. Office interactions by month, and now these are a little bit hypothetical officer names because we have not started collecting the data, but this is giving you an idea that what we'll be able to track from a standpoint of which officer is engaging more with how many people and what location from what date and time. So it almost kind of comes back to a soft scorecard standpoint, that some officers are engaging in certain areas more, some officers engaging in certain services side more, certain officers are engaging certain population demographics more. And this will help you evaluate that what kind of officer engagement and personalities that you can engage in certain field level duties. Risk levels over time, we're absolutely seeing a correlation that will come in here as we start onboarding data. The person who is staying in a high-risk encampment is already a risky person. They have a risk associated with them. As the person moves to an encampment which is less risky, we're seeing correlation will become where the person tends to become less and less risky. They'll engage with more services, they'll engage with more officers on the field, they'll go back to the shelter, they'll probably take help from behavioral health. So those kind of behavioral attribution and changes that'll happen over time will kind of indicate that this person is trying to get better out of the street and wants to head towards independent lifestyle. So that kind of data will be invaluable to your department and all other supporting departments to see that which individuals have higher propensity to stay homeless and which individuals have higher propensity to go back to normal life. Again, coming back to the KPIs, our key performance indexes are, indices are getting people off the streets, right, and get back to them a normal lifestyle, making services available when they're needed and what time and at the timely fashion, and to provide them ability to go back to normal, independent life. We find that drivers are monitoring the mobility of those people, onboarding their data and information into the system, giving them access to services, and able to communicate between departmental points of engagement to bring the services to the right people at the right time. We believe this application has different levers that will provide incredible value over the years, speed to information, responsiveness of the officers, and visibility of data and other things. Again, we are very honored to be building this future with you. Thank you again to all the departments and Chief Jackson on the probation side and the Sheriff's Office, and we'll look forward to any of the comments you may have, but we have another four months to go, and we are very, very positive and extremely blessed to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? This is, this is one of the tools that we're giving law enforcement, because we've always said that, how do we track these folks and where are they at? And I think this is a huge step in the right direction, not only for protecting our county employees because they go into so many risky situations, but being able to collaboratively in all the cities and the counties to talk one another and, and see where the people are that need the services that we provide. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Chief, Chief Jackson, we have a presentation for SJ Cares, so we learned about the Sheriff's Department, we learned about agriculture, and now we're learning about the tools that we're giving probation and how we're handling homelessness and probation department and SJ Cares. Take it away.
All right. Good morning, Chair, Canapa, Board, C.A.O. Regalo, Counselor Kernan, Clerk of the Board de Board. My name is Jamie Grant, and I am the Deputy Chief Probation Officer overseeing the San Joaquin County Community Assessment, Response, and Engagement Services, otherwise known as SJ Cares. Today, I have the pleasure of providing you with an update on SJ Cares and highlighting a few of our many successes. Before I get started, I wanted just to provide a timeline and overview of SJ Cares as a foundation to this presentation. In February of 2024, the Board of Supervisors approved probation to lead the efforts to help address the homeless crisis in San Joaquin County. In April of 2024, I was transferred to this position, and I started connecting with those who are already working in this space. And in July of 2024, our team grew from just two officers to an addition of three mental health specialists from our behavioral health partners. Healthcare Services has made staffing SJ Cares a priority, and this multidisciplinary team is now comprised of six probation officers, one mental health specialist, three outreach workers, and one social worker. We work collaboratively with our local law enforcement agencies, county agencies, and various nonprofit organizations. Our structured approach provides intense case management to those who might otherwise be ineligible for traditional case management services. Our mission is to quickly identify, assess, and link individuals to supportive services within San Joaquin County. Our staff assist their clients throughout their continuum and ensure that they don't fall through the cracks. For the purpose of this presentation, our data is from July 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2025. In the past 14 months, we have made 4,463 contacts with 770 unique individuals. Of those individuals, 37% have agreed to work with us and signed a release of information. 33% didn't want to sign a release of information, but they, but we were able to link them to a service and/or a resource within the community. And 30% did not want anything to do with us, and that's okay. But we don't stop there. We continue to engage clients even if they are not wanting our services. SJ Cares is currently working with 146 clients. This here is outreach and engagement, our SJ Cares 1.0. This is what it looks like. We meet them where they're at. We build trust, we assess, and we link to services. We understand that not everybody is ready the first time we meet them. We may lose some along the way, but this team does not give up. They picked them up where they left off. Our 2.0 team is our intense case management. Our case managers meet with their clients weekly and work alongside them to obtain their vital documents, provide them assistance, transportation, getting to appointments, setting up SSI disability, and we also review the case plan that we have made with them. We, our, our goal is to fill gaps and break down barriers as they work towards their self-sufficiency. Our probation clients who are unhoused, they are, they continue to be supervised by their probation officers who provide the same intense case management to assist them, to ensure compliance, and again, to reach their self-sufficiency. Lastly, we have linked 484 individuals to various services. Behavioral health being at the top, whether that's a, an assessment that we've made an appointment for them, or we have re-linked them back to behavioral health. Medical, we want them to get signed up for enhanced care management, get them a primary care physician, or we are calling out street medicine to meet them where they're at. And lastly, housing referral. Our main goal is to get them off the street and in some sort of housing. As SJ Cares was getting off the ground, I felt it was important to create a platform where the community can report unhoused in their area. Outside of our calls from our law enforcement partners and our elected officials, we received 113 referrals from our community members, and of those 46 individuals wanted to work with us, therefore signing a release of information allowing us to communicate with our partners. On August 6th, we received a referral regarding a gentleman in Lodi who was, who had been unhoused for many years and generating many calls for service, many complaints, and concerns for our local business owners in the downtown area. Once we received that referral, our team did a little research and learned this individual was no stranger to their law enforcement, and in fact, he had received over 30 citations- And in fact, he had received over 30 citations over a short period of time. The next day, our team responded to this location and offered services, and we were immediately met with resistance. His response was a hard no. And unless we were getting him his own place in Lodi, he wasn't going anywhere. After hitting many roadblocks, the team told him that we would be back tomorrow to check on him. When the team showed up the following day, he was still hesitant. He was still hesitant, and he didn't want our services. However, we listened to him and we started to explore other options. He spoke of his family. So, you know, we tend to hone in on certain things, and we started exploring that. The following week on Wednesday, the team followed up with him, and he appeared to be in a better mindset and more willing to speak with us and our team. He stated that he was actually open to taking a tour of the housing facility that we keep telling him about in Stockton. And then at the beginning, it was a hard no. He was not going to Stockton. He didn't like Stockton. He wanted to stay there in Lodi. So as he said that he was willing to take a tour, we set up transportation for the following day. And on August 14th, we picked him up in Lodi. We transported him to Stockton to Upliftall. And after an intake process and, you know, going over the program and, and the curfew and all of that, he decided to stay. He actually, he sat on the bed, and he said he wasn't leaving. So he stayed in Stockton. I'm going to be honest with you. I really thought we had our work cut out for this individual. But when you look at it in perspective, it took us four contacts in six working days to get this individual off the street and into housing. So, you know, me, I am not out with them. But I, I really wanted to know, what was it? What did we say? What did we do that changed his mind in four contacts to work with us? And this is what he had to say. Does it sound working? Does it sound? Yeah. It's audio. Yeah, can we click on that? Technical difficulties.
I didn't give up, Bobby. You kept coming back. That's what was the help I needed. And otherwise, I wouldn't be here. I mean, but you didn't give up.
You're a person, Daryl.
And people, some of you realize that that's the difference.
And if you guys knew the backstory and the elements that he was living in, that statement is very impactful. So as I highlight the success and the many successes, no, this work is not easy. Our team sees things they cannot unsee. They hear things they cannot mute. But they keep going back. And as you just heard, it is the consistency of our team that makes a huge impact in the individual's lives.
I didn't give up.
This is a, another example of referrals that we get. We were tagged in a Facebook social media page. We heard, we answered. So this slide here and, and these numbers really make me happy. And they make me smile because when you see an individual take a huge step of getting off the streets, accepting our services, and getting in a car with us and going to a shelter or a housing or a sober living, sober living environment, it, it, it's huge. And, you know, it, they're stepping outside of their comfort zone. And, and that's huge for them. So we have successfully gotten 85 people off the streets and into some form of housing, whether that's a shelter, a transitional type housing situation, a sober living environment. Of those 85, we have secured permanent housing for 30% of those. Now, again, permanent housing to us is different to their permanent housing. So that, that would be a shared living environment, renting a room from somebody. That could be getting their trailer tagged and inoperable and getting it off the streets and into a trailer park or a family's house. And ultimately, getting them their own space. So getting them their own apartment. We've also been able to reunify 10% back to family. So again, that could be another form of permanent housing. I've got two examples of a, you know, kind of testimonial of individuals that we've been able to work with and get off the street. The first one is Tammy, and she's depicted right here in the lower right of our PowerPoint. Tammy is a 67-year-old lady. She has three cats. She's been unhoused for six years. And she just got tired. She got tired of the displacements. And again, consistency and being there when they're ready to make that change is what we are all about.
I've been out on the streets for six years. And one day, it just came to too, too many sweets by the police. And the police really worked with me. You know, because I had my cats, my poor cats. And they finally talked to me throughout the day. And then Officer Richardson brought out Ron to me to, you know, and Ron explained the program. I chose to make that step because I hoped that it would be a program that could help me. I always had my doubts, but I'm happy.
And it's just so amazing to see, like, the before and after. You know, the, the, the before picture there on the left, and the after is, you know, she showered, she's clean, she's snuggled up in her bed. And then one more.
I've been unhoused for about two years. First, I was staying at St. Mary's Shelter. Actually, got into S J Cares through another officer that came for a cleanup in my area. And he's the one that told me about it, which is when I went to probation and I met Officer Moreno. And I want to say that it was an awesome experience. They've been very, very helpful, especially with my dog and consideration of feelings. Things have just been going good ever since. And yes, losing my dog is hard, but hopefully there's something out there for him that's probably better.
So both of these examples, they had pets. But I, I, I put up there, pets are our biggest barrier when we look at housing our individuals. But through our case management, we navigate through barriers. We provide compassionate support. And every success is the result of consistency, creativity, and collaboration. We could not do this work on our own. So lastly, I've got two pictures up here. The one on the left, obviously, you could see that our team is throwing football with some individuals from an encampment. And it really just shows the human side of us, that we are there to help and we are there to, you know, treat them as people and allow them to engage with us. And then the picture on the right is one of our officers. We actually got this young little man and his mother out of a, out, out of an encampment. And he was on his way to school. And Officer Moreno asked, like, do you want me to take you to school or do you want mom to take you to school? And this little boy said, I want you to take me to school. So we transported him to school, and she walked him into, into class, left. And I believe she picked him up from school and brought her back to mom, who was at the Family Justice Center. We are kind of getting everything arranged for, for housing. And lastly.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everything you've done for me as far as helping me out. And I appreciate everything you've done, Mr. Richardson. You're a good guy, and, and, uh, yeah, keep on helping people because you're good at that.
So we get many voicemails like that. And that's our presentation. I just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to do this work.
This absolutely warms my heart.
I'm surprised I didn't cry, but.
Because we have been working so hard. And people don't get it. I'm going to cry. But it's the tools that we're doing. And I think it, we've gotten a long, long way to giving people back their dignity. And it's, it's hard, and everything is so negative in our community. But I mean, everyone says, oh, my God, you're going to take somebody from Lodi and bring them to Stockton. And that's always the thing. It's a human being in our county. And those are the things that you've done is brought it back to, and Sarah, shout out Sarah. But bringing back the dignity part and the human side of it has been amazing, and it's working. And so I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you for what you do. St. Mary's is coming on with, I think, 240 beds. Forty of them are going to be respite. We've been working on Camp, Canapa is what we're calling it. We can't have tents under 50 degrees. But I mean, with 240 beds there and possibly another 150 beds there, these are parts of the tool, the, the, the computer program. It's, I mean, not about tracking people. It's just making it safer for our employees. It's making it safer for the touches and the contacts that we have with them. So I mean, San Joaquin County is listening. And this is part of the tool. And I'm glad people are here to hear what we're doing and how we're doing it. So any comments from the board before I sit here and lose it like a sobbing little supervisor than I am? But thank you. So Supervisor Gerdia.
You know, I, I think the biggest thing is what I've learned in my, in my nine months is, you know, as a normal citizen, you're at work every day. And you, you know, you take your kids to school and, you know, sports or whatever and you do your family thing is that you don't know what, you know, what programs that the county offers to are unhoused. And it's a matter of, of, you know, getting out not just the, the community, but it's, it's, you know, excuse me, the unhoused, but letting our community know what, what we're doing and the type of services that we provide. And that's what I've seen in, in, as being elected is, it's a challenge. So it's a challenge, you know? We don't, we don't, you know, unless you're tuned into social media, it's really hard to share what we do. And so I, I, I'm very, very happy and, and proud of what we're doing and, and the things that I've learned that S J Cares is doing. And you guys did a phenomenal job, a part of a big team of probation and, and, you know, the Sheriff's Department and all the different stakeholders that are in place. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And to Family Justice, you said another amazing program. You know what I mean? The work that they do has just been amazing. So anybody else want to speak before? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Chief Jackson, and, and all your career that came out today. So I'm glad we could be able to put it forward so that everybody could hear the presentation. So thanks, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on along. So we're going to consent, ask the board members if there's any consent items they would like to pull. Start with Supervisor Gerdia.
None today.
None today? Vice Chair Dolly Wall? Supervisor Dane? And Supervisor Rickman? Okay, moving right along. So we'll call for a motion to accept the consent. And a second? Motion, a second. Call for the vote. Motion passes 5-0. Moving along. We're just going to keep going, so we'll move on. We'll go to closed session afterwards. We'll go to discussion item. Why don't, why don't we move? Since a lot of people are here for the bid one, why don't we move that forward to number one? Why don't we move number three to number one? So that the folks that, they've been here long enough. And thank you for your patience in watching county government work. So at this time, we're going to move number three to the front of the list and adopt a resolution of intention to establish the Lodi Winery Business Improvement District and set a public meeting for October 7th and a public hearing for November 18th. So Kelly Casello, Gina Reed, and Stuart Spencer. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good, good morning, Canapa Chair, members of the Board, County Council Kirin and C A O Regalo. Kelly Cavelo, Senior Deputy County Administrator. We also have with us today Stuart Spencer with the Lodi Wine Grape Commission, and Gina Reed with Civitas, Senior Project Manager with Civitas. I'm going to start by providing a brief background, and then I will turn it over to Gina and Stuart to discuss the proposed Lodi Winery Business Improvement District, which I will refer to as the district moving forward. On November 29th, 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved a no-cost service agreement with Civitas, who had been retained by the Lodi Wine Grape Commission for the purpose of determining the feasibility of forming a district. Should the commission determine formation to be feasible, San Joaquin County would act as the lead government agency in the formation, renewals, and management of the district. The resolution of intention to form the district was initially brought before this board on August 12th, 2025. Based on industry feedback received prior to and at the board meeting, the Board of Supervisors asked that this item be continued and be brought back to the board today. An industry meeting was held on September 4th, 2025 at Oak Farm Vineyards to continue industry discussion on the district. The county was able to get updated sales tax data for the period of April 24th, or 2024 through March 2025. And to date, 35 petitions representing 64.33% of the wineries who will pay the assessment have been received in support of the formation of the district. This meets the 50% threshold required by Section 36621 of the Streets and Highways Code to petition the Board of Supervisors to proceed with proposed resolution to form the district. So at this time, I will turn it over to Gina and Stuart for their presentation.
Good afternoon, Gina Reed with Civitas. I know we gave this presentation last month, so I'll be brief. Thank you. All right, here we go. So what is a winery business improvement district, or bid as I'll refer to it? So a winery bid is a special assessment district that is initiated by those that would pay the assessment to create a stable funding source to pay for programs and services that provide a specific benefit to the payers. And the bids are ultimately approved by the county or city. Bids are obviously not a new, a, a new phenomenon. There, I know you guys are familiar with the Lodi Tourism Business Improvement District here, where the assessment is placed on hotels. There are 115 hotel districts in California. And about four years ago, winery owners essentially thought, hey, this, this mechanism is in place for hotels. Why don't we use it for winery businesses? So Temecula was the first one to create a district four years ago. They're actually renewing their district now, as well as Livermore. Amador County and Santa Barbara are the newest. And then there are a couple of other districts in the formation process as well. And I'll turn it over to Stuart to talk about why Lodi wineries are pursuing a bid.
Thank you, and thank you, Supervisors, for hearing us out again. I don't want to get into the details of all this stuff, but I'm going to just talk a little bit about why, why we want to do this. And we just had a great report from our ag commissioner on the economic impact of, of San Joaquin County agriculture. And I think it was Supervisor Rickman who mentioned that agriculture is the heart of San Joaquin County. It's the economic engine that drives our county. It's the economic engine that drives the whole San Joaquin Valley. And it is struggling right now. We are struggling at all ends. And what we are trying to do here is an economic development tool. This is about adding value to our wine grape industry. Being, being a farmer in California is not easy. It is one of the most costly places to do business in the world. And our margins are getting squeezed and pinched at every step of the way. What is unique to wine grapes? It is one of the most value-added crops there is. The conversion of grapes to wine and then the selling of wine direct to retailers, restaurants, and consumers adds incredible value. That creates incredible economic input or output into our community. We know from an economic impact report that was done by the California Wine Institute and the California Association of Wine Grape Growers a couple of years ago, for every dollar spent on grapes in California, it generates $26 of economic output in this state. Our grape crop here in Calif, in San Joaquin County was like 350 million last year. So that's significant economic impact. But the more we can capture the value-added portion of that in San Joaquin County, the better our county will be. The more jobs that are created, the more economic output that is created, the more taxes are paid and all of that. This program we are trying to put together today is an economic impact tool. It is about giving us a vehicle to promote the wines of Lodi, California. We have been funding our Lodi winery promotion for the last 30-plus years through the Wine Grape Commission, through an assessment the grape growers pay out of their pocket to fund our organization and move things forward. From the very beginning, one of our primary goals was to create a winery community. When we started back in 1991, there was only a handful of wineries in the Lodi area. Nobody was producing Lodi wine. Nobody was selling a Lodi labeled wine. And there was very little visitation to the area. It was a strategic goal of ours. We created Visit Lodi in 1998. We opened the Wine and Visitor Center in 2000. We partnered with our winery community and created an association under our organization to kind of fund winery promotions. We created Wine and Chocolate. We created all these events and activities to drive tourism to the area. We've had tremendous success over that last 25 years. But the funding for our winery promotions has struggled and the funding for our grape growers has struggled too. Our organization took a $450,000 hit just last year because of all the grapes that went unharvested. Just to point out in our, our ag commissioner's report, he said it was due to COVID. It is not due to COVID. We left thousands of tons of grapes unharvested because our largest grape buyers in California are importing cheap foreign wine. Bulk imports into California are up 17% in the first six months of this year while grapes are going unsold. And so we need this tool to promote our wines. The money that's going to be generated through the BID is going to be used to promote Lodi as a destination, promote Lodi wineries, and bring consumers here to this area. We know through our data we're collecting that 74, 74, 78% of our sales out of our wineries goes to California residents. About 50% of that is to San Joaquin County residents. It's great support we get from San Joaquin County. But if we are going to grow our community and grow our business, we need to reach further and farther out and get more people coming to Lodi, visiting our wineries, staying in our hotels, staying in our, eating in our restaurants, and buying our wines and taking them back home. That is what we're trying to do here is create this tool to drive this region forward. And we're gonna do it with the help of our winery community. They're gonna have plenty of say in how this is governed and how it moves forward. We've done extensive outreach over the last three years to get it to this point. And we are ready to move forward and need your support to do this.
So what does it take to form the bid? As Stuart mentioned, there has been a lot of outreach over the last few years, both with the winery community as well as other stakeholders. We started with the feasibility study back beginning of 2023 and have since had discussions with businesses about, you know, what programs would benefit their business, what does the assessment rate look like, what are the boundaries? All of that information has been put into the management district plan, which you guys have in your packet. We've listened. We've actually revised the management district plan since it was first drafted and reduced the assessment by half a percent. And then from here, we received enough petitions. The law requires that we collect petitions from owners that would pay over 50% of the assessment. So it is based on how much they would pay. That allows us to come here today to initiate proceedings. So following this meeting, we also are required to get consent from the other jurisdictions that are in the boundaries. And then there are two additional meetings that we would come back to you guys for. There's a public meeting and then ultimately a final hearing where you guys would be formally approving the district. As far as your responsibilities, again, we would come to you as the lead jurisdiction for the required three meetings. If and when the district is formed, there is a requirement for the Owners Association, which is the nonprofit that is governing the district, to come to you annually to present an annual report, to show how the funds are being spent and what the plans are for the upcoming year. And then there would be a contract between that nonprofit and the county. And then all of the other jurisdictions, again, as I mentioned, we do need to go get consent from the County of Sacramento, Elk Grove, Galt, and Lodi prior to the final hearing in order to have them be included in the boundaries. As Kelly mentioned, these are the petitions that we received. Again, minimum requirement over 50%, which we have received at 64%. So today, we're asking you to adopt a resolution of intention that basically just allows us to continue the process. From here, a notice would be mailed to all assessed businesses, letting them know of the two upcoming hearings. So there would be two opportunities, basically two public hearings. One would be October 7th, the final one being November 18th. So giving the wineries the ability to come and to speak at the meetings. And then we're asking you to adopt a resolution requesting consent. So then we can go to the other jurisdictions and have them grant consent to allow you to be the lead jurisdiction to move the process through. So two resolutions today. The public meeting in Oc, in October would just be to, to take public testimony. And then that November meeting would be public testimony and then the final adoption of a resolution to form the district. And that is it. Open to questions.
I just have one question. Somebody, I mean, when you do form this, somebody said if it does get formed, obviously because there's a percentage of the people that are in favor of it, but the people that aren't in favor, the board makeup, how does that work? So I mean, they said, hey, could it be nine member, three, three on, you know, big wineries, three medium wineries, and three small wineries? So that they have input, you know, on what the process would be? Or how, how does that work? Because I didn't, I don't. Oh, okay. So, oh, okay. All right. Okay, that was just a question that I had. So then, okay, okay Supervisor Dane.
One of the things I'd like, one of the things I'd like to do first before we, we get into that is, is go through, are we qualified to start with the 68% and the 50%? I want to start with that first before we move through the rest of it. I had received a letter, and I think the board did, from, from Attorney Brett Jolly. I, I'd like to address those points first, so we can go through. I do understand one of, and if, if Mr. Jolly, if you care to, to join, you're, you're more than welcome to. One of the things he, he addressed in his letter was Viagio dropping out. That, that being said, I, I'm still looking at the, the undisclosed numbers here. It, it still doesn't drop at anywhere below 60%. But was there anything else in that letter? Specifically, did you see the letter?
Me?
Yeah.
I just saw it when I walked in.
Yeah, I saw it last night about midnight. That, that would, would stop us from creating it? Okay, okay. There's, the way I'm looking at this, this process here, and I disagree a little bit with you on how we work through this system, because what I don't want to see, I mean, PG&E comes to mind. It's like, we have to have two public hearings and they do it. And it's just, it's just a matter of process. They just do their public hearings and they listen to us talk and they don't listen and they move on. And, and that's not going to happen here. And I know you guys don't want that to happen here because you've got the best interest of San Joaquin County in mind. This is the opening of this process, okay? So what we are allowing them to do by voting yes today is to begin a process that, that quite frankly isn't quite as easy as it laid, as it's laid out. Because they have to have, they have to secure the agreement of Lodi, City Council, Sacramento, Galt, Elk Grove. So there's, there's a little process to go through. I think for those that, that were in the dissenting column, and I've spent all weekend talking to a lot of them, is this formation of the board. And, and I, I think there's some, there was some misunderstandings. I think everybody understands now. It's not the Wine Grape Commission that's in charge of this. It will be their own board and how that board is laid out. And I've, I've discussed it with you, Stuart. I've discussed it with another, a number of the winery owners is making sure that this isn't a, a top-heavy process, to put it, you know, mildly. I mean, you've got, I mean, I'm looking at these receipts and between Michael David and Oak Farms and they're paying about half of it. But they, they can't control the board. It's, it's very important. And nor do I think, you know, as, as a region, we want, you know, one or two big voices controlling it. We've got so much talent within our local wineries that we can, that we can take consent to establish this board. The advertising and marketing function of this board is not to, right now, what we've got is we've got wineries fighting over this one pie. It's to expand the pie. It's to market, why should people come to San Joaquin County? People aren't gonna jump on a plane or drive four hours because of an advertising campaign, trying to figure out which winery. We're going to, we're already getting 50% of that. It's to do things like, you know, we, we, we all know, we want to establish two-day trips, three-day trips. We want you to discover the delta. We want you to go out to Jesse's Grove and see one of the great shows that's happening tonight. We want you to go to some of our local venues for some of the live music and shows. We, we've got an award-winning Mickey Grove Regional Park that most people don't even, in San Joaquin County, don't even know about it. It's to, it's to market the region. It's, it's really to make San Joaquin County a place to go. And it's to team up with people like Wes over at Visit Lodi. You know, the hotels right now are paying 6% to 10% on a, on a tourism tax already. And that's going into one pot of money. One of the concerns was, well, are we duplicating efforts? You know, are they gonna be spending this money? And then the, the Wine Board, they're gonna be spending a pot of money. But it's actually create a seat on this nine-member panel to where Wes is actually, we're a representative for Visit Lodi, is on that panel too. So we're looking at this as a regional marketing plan. A way to get individuals interested and excited about San Joaquin County other than maybe some other things they read on the internet about San Joaquin County and put us in a positive light. That being said, I, one of the things I would like to see, and I don't know, I, I mean, this is gonna be more of a gentleman's or, or gentlewoman's agreement. And it was suggested to me by a former member of the Wine Grape Commission is, when selecting the members from this board, is to be able to send out a slate of candidates of who, who is being proposed to all the wineries. And I don't mean weighted. I mean, one winery, one vote. And say, hey, this is what we're looking at. These are the nine members of this process. Send that out to them and get the feedback before we come back to the, the board again. So your, your process here, if, if we initiate this, starts the ball rolling. You still have to go to the cities, the other counties. My understanding from County Council, unless it comes back in whole anyway, we almost have to start the clock over again. Am I right, Council?
You're, you're indicating that if, if, say that again, please. I.
What you had indicated to me is if any of the boundaries of this are altered in any way, we almost have to start again.
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
We have the ability, sorry.
Excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
So. We're, we're gonna start this process and then you and, and all the legal people that always tell me no, you guys can get together in a room and find a way to yes. Okay? But in the meantime, this starts the process so we can go through it and then we can work through how we establish this board.
Okay. Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to, and, and I'll, I'll speak offline or, or resolve any, any ambiguities that may exist, might exist. I, I would say with respect to the letter from Brett Jolly, and it, it was somewhat last minute, so the ability to fully decipher it and go through it is, is limited. But to address one of the, one of the issues that were raised on pages two and three, having to do with the weighted average and the fact that that, that information is not public, I would suggest that if the board's moving forward here today, that it also make a motion to place in the record, under seal, the, the confidential information with regard to the weighted averages, which includes the sales data. That would be under seal. The reason I would recommend that is if there were a writ taken and it were to be brought before the courts, an in-camera review, that is a confidential review, could be done by the judge. And so that would be my suggestion to address what, the arguments that are made on pages two and three of Mr. Jolly's letter.
Okay. So that, that would address the folks saying that, hey, they're, they're trying to skirt the process because that data can't be shared and that's part of it, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a argument that we have to have a weighted average of over 50%. But there's also a tax code section which makes sales data confidential. And the argument's being made, well, how do we, how do we, we who are in opposition to this determine whether that 50% threshold has been met? We, you know, we shouldn't have to just take your word for it. And my resolution of that would be place the, place the data in the record and, but put it under seal. And that way, if somebody wants to judicially challenge it, a judge can look at it confidentially and confirm the fact, confirm the representation that's been made that over 50% weighted average are in favor of this according to the petition.
And then I, I just wanted to make one other point too. You know, there's not a, a one fix-all to the economic problems that not only the ag community, but the wine, the wineries face right now. It's, it's multi-pronged. And, and this is, but one little piece I see on the marketing side. One of the things we also need to look at, and I won't spend too much time on it because it's not agendized, is the wine ordinance itself. And so I think we're gonna take a look at this. With the wine ordinance that was, I've talked to a couple of my predecessors in the past and tried to figure out, you know, where do these indiscriminate limits come from on, you know, who does how many events and, and so forth? I think we need to look at that. There, there's, I mean, let's face it. Some people are skirting the wine ordinance. Some people, it's all over the place. What, what, what we want is a wine ordinance that's gonna produce income and jobs in San Joaquin County. Well, if we do that, this is a portion of it because we're gonna want to market that. So keep that in mind as well. And then if there's, go ahead.
Supervisor Gardea, and then we'll go to public comment. Because Suzanne obviously waited around, so we need to hear Suzanne. And then Janice Vera is also on deck. So as soon as Supervisor Gardea, regardless, unless any other supervisors are gonna speak, you'll be up to speak next.
Yeah, I just have one question. So what happens if they don't get consent from the other jurisdictions? And I don't know who can answer that.
If we don't get consent, then we reduce the boundaries. And at the final hearing, you adopt a revised plan with the reduced boundaries.
So the boundaries should be reduced based on not getting the consent?
Correct.
Thank you. So at this time, Suzanne.
Hold on. Do we have congruence there, Council?
This is, I, I just learned of the potential for change boundaries. So I'd have to, I'd have to look into it. I'm, I'm not, but my thought was that since the resolution is indicating what the boundaries are that you're passing, that you have to start over. But I've not been through the process, as has the people speaking with you, speaking before you today. And so I would, I would certainly be interested in their perspective. And I, I suspect they may be correct that there's an argument you could do it that way. But without having had the opportunity to research it, I can't definitively say.
Just make two points before we move forward. One was with respect to the board, if a new organization would be created. I think we have the best interest of putting forth a board that is very rep. have the best interest of putting forth a board that is very representative of our total winery community. And to suggest we have large wineries within this community is kind of misleading because even Michael David, which is the largest of our destination wineries, would be considered a medium winery by industry standards. The majority of the rest of us are all small wineries. Secondly, the other thing this organization, formation of this will do, will allow us to engage with the county as a group of wineries in modifying our winery ordinance to serve our interests and the county's interests. So this will give us a voice that we haven't had as a community before because our organization, the Wine Grape Commission, cannot get involved in land use politics. So, thank you. And we have some people speaking to support as well, too, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if they filled out cards, but we'll get to opening it after that. So at this time, Suzanne, you have the floor. Three minutes.
Thank you for letting me go later. I changed my work schedule. So Suzanne Burns, Jesse's Grove, Jesse's Grove Winery, attending about three meetings. The one, the latest one was on the fourth of last month. And talking with the steering committee, people have been working on this project for two and a half years, asking the question, so what is your plan for marketing and promotion? Nothing was brought up. Get on the steering committee and we'll try to figure it out. So basically, there is no plan on the future marketing and promotion. And that, to me, is my customers who support me are writing a blank check because that would come out of their sales. One and a half percent of their sales, they're charged, the public are charged, and it goes to marketing and promotion, whatever that is. And I don't know what that is. No one could answer that on the steering committee. Two and a half years, you'd think you'd have an idea. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Janice Vieira?
Hi, I'm Janice Vieira with St. George Winery, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here today. Unfortunately, there's a couple of issues that I have, one being the major issue of a weighed vote. The pop-up that came up today still showed Viaggio, however it was reflected, that didn't affect the bottom line. So if the area is readjusted, say Elk Grove is not, they're not going to be part of it, then does that whole list have to be readjusted as far as a weighed vote? Because some of those wineries are in other areas other than in our area. And it's just a sad thing to say the division that this has caused between wineries. Because one of the great things people liked to come to Lodi was for the small uniqueness that Lodi has to offer. And I would tell my customer, hey, when you leave, you're my advertising. And right now, that's just not what we're getting. I suggest a facilitator to be brought forth to try to, us work together. Because if this is approved, we have to still be that neighbor. We have to be the one to refer a winery to another winery. I don't want this to divide us. We all offer something unique and different. However, this has divided us because honestly, I didn't get to vote and I will never get to vote because this will always be a weighed vote. And that just seems so unfair. We had Wine Club this weekend. I asked my membership, not the public, but people who support me, I support them. And I asked them, are you okay with this? And they said, I'm tired of being nickelled and dimed. I'm not okay with this. And we are so, I don't know, it's just not a good time right now to do what I think has been brought forth to you. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. At this time, anybody that hasn't filled out a card, please come forward and state your name. Wes Ray.
Good morning, Chair Canepa, Supervisors, Wes Ray, President and CEO of Visit Lodi, and thank you for the opportunity to share my prepared remarks. Visit Lodi's job is simple to say, but hard to do. We have to keep Lodi top of mind in a highly competitive California marketplace with visitors, media, and trade partners who are courted every day by larger, better-funded tourism organizations. The winery bid will give Lodi a dependable way to do that, working together. It's not a new bureaucracy. It is a focused tool that the winery community controls with clear priorities, regular reporting, and works in tandem with the efforts of Visit Lodi so our dollars can go further. Why does it matter beyond the tasting room? Stronger winery demand is a front door to our visitor economy. When tasting rooms are busy, hotel lobbies are busy. Consistent promotion lifts midweek occupancy, stretches average length of stay, and smoothes out the dips in seasons. That supports our restaurants, our retailers, attractions, and event venues. It drives more room nights, which means more TOT tax revenue for our city services. And Visit Lodi cannot do this alone. We have to do this together, and I believe the bid will result in a stronger unified brand for Lodi, more heads in beds, and a healthier Main Street. What the public gets is clarity and coordination. What winery gets is increased demand, and we support advancing the process today to keep the momentum so Lodi can compete at the level its wines deserve. Please move this forward so Lodi can match its quality with visibility and turn our individual organizational strengths into a regional advantage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Canepa, members of the Board of Supervisors, Attorney Brett Jolly on behalf of several wineries in the region. We're here to ask, ultimately ask, that the Board of Supervisors continue this item for really two specific reasons. As you'll recall, when we were here last month, when we walked out of here, my clients thought that we would have a couple of things by the time we came back to this meeting. One is more information on how the weighted vote is calculated. And that doesn't mean a release of confidential tax data. But there's a spectrum there. Right now, we're told, here's the, here's the concluding number, here's, and then it's based on confidential tax data. We can't give you the confidential tax data, so you have to just have this final number that says it's over 50%. But many folks out there in the industry don't understand how the weighting was calculated, what methodology was applied, and how each vote is tabulated based on that weight. That is information that can be shared and should be shared that does not violate tax disclosure laws. So that's information we thought we would get, and we didn't. And that's important because, I mean, that's akin to thinking, think about, it's football season now. NFL decides that they're going to have a new rule that touchdowns are weighted based on whatever player scores them. And they say, we're not going to tell you what's player is, what the weight of each player is, but at the end of the game, we'll tell you which team wins based on that weighting, and we'll just give you the final score. That's, that's how we're looking at this situation right now. We don't understand how the weighting is done, how the numbers were calculated. So we thought we would get that information. We haven't seen it and we think it's important to have. The other thing that we left here with was instruction, as I heard it, that the proponents, and let me say this, there's, everybody in this room wants the wine industry to do better. There are different ideas about how to accomplish this, but the division here, I think, can ultimately lead to some sort of consensus. That was the instruction that I heard from this board, was that the proponents needed to go out and try to work to build consensus with the wineries that had issues with what was being proposed. Again, you're being asked to create a new taxing authority that would impose new taxes on the businesses in the community. It's a big deal. And so the idea was that the Wine Grape Commission, that's the proponent of this, and Civitas would work closely with the wine industry to try to build consensus. There was one meeting that took place last Thursday. I'm told several ideas were discussed. There is, from my clients, a receptiveness to explore those ideas further, but with that coming down just at that, at the.
You could have, you could have another minute.
Thank you. In the 11th hour, and the discussion, I'm told, was positive. There were some ideas, things like Supervisor Ding is discussed about trying to figure out the makeup of the board. Now, no attorney I know is going to tell you it's good to proceed on a handshake deal. So we would want to understand that more and understand how the bylaws and the makeup of, of that board would be altered in order to address some of those issues. And I think those should be, should be fleshed out further. So we're asking that rather than the board proceed and bulldoze through and set this in motion, that we get more information on the weighted vote, which will also be apt at the time of the final approval, and that we have an opportunity for more discussion amongst the industry to try to see if we can come up with consensus. Because everybody agrees that the wine industry is hurting right now and we need to find ways to fix it. But moving forward today is not the way to do that, in our opinion. So we ask for more time to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisors, my name is Steve Felton. I'm the owner of Clinker Brick Winery in Lodi. The time is now. You know, we've got wineries, tasting rooms that are suffering in our area. Consumption's down. Customer attendance is down. I mean, we've got some days that we may only have one or two customers during the week. So, you know, we need this program to promote this area, to get out and tell the rest of the state and the world that Lodi is here and, you know, we need help. And the time is now, really. It's, it's, if we wait longer and longer, we just miss the boat. The other areas are doing these programs and driving consumers to their areas, and we need, we need to step up and get it done. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having us today. My name is Rochelle Spillata from Intercoastal Wine Company. You know, the time is now for a lot of things, but not for this. I don't want to charge my customers, who are my loyal constituents to the winery, to pay for my marketing. That's just the simple fact. Numbers are down in Napa and there, there's, I mean, how many people know about Napa around the world? Numbers are down in Las Vegas, if you watch the news. How many people know about Las Vegas? Numbers are down because the economy is down and people are suffering. I've had a lot of customers come in and say they have to cut back or, you know, they're just not able to do what they used to do. It's about economy. And I think that as an area, Lodi, you know, to me, a lot of people come to us now because they're saying they don't want to go to Napa because Napa's too expensive. They like the fact that we don't have five line items on a receipt to charge them for. And I feel that, you know, that keeps us who we are as a boutique winery. I don't want to have my customers, when they're, when they're checking out, that's the time to make them feel the best. It's the time to make them feel like, come back again. Not to say, what is this line item? What is this extra charge for? And then I have to try to explain to them that it's to help the marketing for our area so I could get more people to come in, not respective of our local people who are supporting us. I don't think that that's very fair. I don't think it's right, and it is a tax. The last time I understood a tax, it was that the people who are paying the tax should be aware of the tax. It's not right to charge people to come and pay and not really understand why. I don't believe that this is the only way. As a winery, we donate our time, we donate our wine, we donate anything we can to help market Lodi. I mean, anybody that's for or against this knows that. They know the wineries, you know, everybody who steps up, who gives out of their own pocket, who shows up to nonprofit events. And we give a lot of money and a lot of time to market our area, but I don't believe that it's the people who should be paying for our marketing. And on one last thought, if you're just a consumer yourself, which all of you are, if you were to go to your hair person, you were to go to your nail person and you saw an extra charge on their, on the receipt, and you said, what's this for, Sandy? What is this extra charge for? Well, I need more customers. It makes me feel like I'm not appreciated for what I do and what I give to that person who's giving me that service. So as much as I want to always help the Lodi Wine Commission, I, and I do my very best to do it if I think that there are other ways to raise money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Carson with Drava Wines in Lodi, one of the smallest wineries. When I first started in the industry in the late 90s, there were six or seven with tasting rooms. Now there's 60 or so with about 85 wineries. And we've seen since COVID some real challenging times. I've had the privilege of working with the Lodi wine community for these almost 30 years and there's, they inspire me, they're good people to work with, and they're very smart. And I look forward to seeing what we can come up with. And this seems to be our best idea at the moment. I am for the BID and I would love to see us have the opportunity to do this. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for considering this, and especially Councilman Ding for the meeting he set up at Oak Farm last week and all the other work that he's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Smurling. I own Cabana Winery. Thirty-seven years ago, I started up in Amador with Renwood, and after 20 years was able to sell it to Rombauer. And when I was looking to continue on my career in the wine business, I was looking at wine regions, and I chose Lodi. One was the great source of grapes, but the other one was the commission and the work that they were doing to promote Lodi. I felt that was absolutely essential for the growth of a community and for recognition. Or I could have paid the price and gone to Napa, which everyone knows. So I chose to come to Lodi, and I think it's been a great experience. My little company has grown from one employee to 27 employees, and we are now holding off and building a tasting room until we hear about the bid's approval. But we can also pack up our business and move to another appellation because we are a more of a negociant-style winery. We need this to be approved. And the reason we need it, and I wear my other hat, I was an investment banker for 20 years, is the opportunity that we're going to lose. You cannot gain market recognition when the economy is booming. It is almost impossible to get noted when everyone is doing well and everyone is getting in their car and going to Napa and Sonoma and not coming to Lodi. Yes, Lodi does a little more business, and now all these dissenters would be a little happier. But the fact of the matter is, the only time you can gain an enormous piece of market share, get recognition, is when the economy is in turmoil. We cannot do that without the money. The commission is suffering because the grape growers are suffering, and anyone who thinks that within maybe two to three years, they'll get back to break even. I'm not even talking about being profitable. They can't support us. We need to take dollars now and get our name known, and that is the way you get market share. Not when the economy is good, when it's bad. All this other nonsense that people are talking about is foolishness. We need to get money to start marketing ourselves and take advantage of the opportunity. It will be a loss that we can never capture again. This is the moment, this is the time where we can go forward and move our Lodi as one of the most recognized wine regions. So I support this completely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Supervisors, Kyle Lerner with Honey Lane Vineyards. While you guys are celebrating your 175th anniversary, our family also celebrated our 125th anniversary farming the land in Lodi. That started in 1900, and now we're into our sixth generation on the family farm. We have seen a lot of things over the years as a family, and if you go all the way back to 1900, I think we were pre-cop cars in, in the area. So things have changed dynamically. In 2006, we saw those dynamics change, and that's when we decided to vertically integrate and start our winery, going from just farmers to being farmers and producers and going to the consumer directly. Things have continued to change and move forward. I was asked to be on the steering committee that was pulled together to find a I was asked to be on the steering committee that was pulled together to find a solution to the decline in sales, to the decline in, in our agricultural portion of that. And clearly, we're nearly 19% down based on the numbers you saw today. The steering committee wasn't put in place to make decisions on how we're gonna market and decide the future of this organization. The steering committee was put together to find a solution to the problem, which we did. We decided that the best way to move forward, to grow wine and the wineries in our community, which also support the rest of our community in San Joaquin County, is to form an independent organization. We had to find a way to fund it, and that was a Business Improvement District. That was the best way, the fastest way, the easiest way, the fairest way, is what we found, to, to fund this organization, to market brand Lodi. It's top-of-funnel marketing. It's bringing people into the region to not only spend money in our wineries, but to spend money in restaurants, to spend money in hotels, to spend money in retailers, which grows the economy of the region. San Joaquin County is tough right now. The whole state is tough right now, and it's incredibly tough to do business. But we urge you to support this, to move forward, so that we can actually be a part of the solution for San Joaquin County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisors, Dan Pennella, Oak Farm Vineyards. I, my whole thought on this is that we have over 6,600 wineries in California, over 4,000 of them have tasting rooms. And wineries are not a necessity for people to live, therefore, since it's a bit of a treat, a luxury, a form of entertainment and relaxation, whatever, because there's so much competition out there, I think anything that we can do to help out, to make that happen, this was primarily, the Wine Grape Commission and all of the top-of-funnel approach that Kyle was just talking about, was primarily funded by growers prior to this. But because of what's happened, in terms of all the foreign wine getting brought in, and, and just overall economic downturn as a result, it's time, in my opinion, for the wineries to step up. And in order to do that at a level that will compete with Santa Barbara, Livermore, these other Temecula, these other regions, which I feel like we are all kind of in a friendly competition with, I feel like this is probably the best solution anybody's come up with, aside from just wineries forking out of pocket everything to help fund this, which we've tried in the past, and hasn't been particularly successful, because not everybody is truthful in their assessments on, on what they voluntarily want to pay. And so for me, I feel like best solution, all, all things considered, I do understand the opposition's concerns, but I do feel like when you're talking about spending $100 on wine, I don't know that the $1.50 is going to make the difference to where people won't chop at your place. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's just where my brain lands with this. And it is fully transparent. It, it's to promote the region, and I feel like it'll primarily help, help out smaller wineries the best, because it, it gives them access to this gigantic budget that'll help push people into their tasting rooms. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Kendra Lang from Linktwin's Family Winery and Vineyards. And I actually was with Stuart and the rest of the crew that I'm sitting with over here four or five years ago, that came forward and said that we needed to find another way to fund winery activities. It was during COVID, and I was the chair of the Lodi Wine Grape Commission, and we had to cut budgets. And we really sat there and wondered, what were we gonna do as both a wine grape community and a winery community to move things forward? Well, to balance the budget, we cut the budget from the winery committee. And we did that because we needed it on the wine grape growing side. So Stuart and I and the rest of the board kind of scratched our heads and said, what are we gonna do? And that's when we came up with this, well, actually Stuart came forward and said, hey, Temecula's doing this BID. We got our funding mostly from consumer sales anyway, from coming to wine and chocolate, from all of those events, those proceeds that we were using was to fund other mechanisms for the marketing and the sales of wine with all of our, you know, all of the community. We needed something stable, so that's why we're here, right? We want something that, on an annual basis, we will be able to count on funds so we can plan those activities from year after year, to be able to bring tourism to our area. It was very simple. I mean, it's not very simple, because here we are, but it, it really just is about stability, and that's what we're looking for. I'm in support of it, our family's in support of it. It, it just will allow the region to continue to grow, and I, you know, maybe this wasn't clear, because I didn't make notes, but the most important thing is, is that we're, we're here to help the county, to help the wineries, to help the wine grape growers, all of us together to move things forward and bring people here to Lodi to help us succeed.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Kuldani from Calavine's Winery. I'd just like to say that the, what this has been based upon entirely from the beginning has been the Temecula and Livermore districts. And if you look at their own records, there's information out there, they, they put out a report every year, and they did take the tax money, but it didn't bring any more foot traffic to them, or it hasn't improved any of the winery's bottom line. So, I feel like they've moved this all forward, kind of based upon these two districts, and they don't even have a good track record. Also, a lot of these people who are speaking, like, in favor of this, are wineries but don't have tasting rooms. And tasting rooms are the ones who are gonna be taxed for this, not wineries, tasting rooms. So there's a difference. And that's, thank you.
Hi, Jacob Woodworth with Michael David Winery. I just kind of wanted to bring up the fact, I originally was also against this BID, had the same concerns as a few other people here. What's the plan? What are we doing? Now's not the time. But, things aren't getting better, things have gotten worse, and now is the time. This gives us an opportunity to come together as a winery community and work together for ourselves and our wineries, and I am in favor of this and really hoping that we can get this pushed through. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Stokes. I'm a fourth-generation grower, and I do have a small wine brand. I don't have a tasting room. A lot of people in this room, whether they're for it or against it, are close friends of mine. I've grown up with them. I went to St. Mary's High School, spent 10 years traveling the world. I went to Seattle, France, Spain, saw so many wine regions. And everything, you know, Rochelle Spalletta and anyone opposing me has said, has a very valid point. And all of those things were thoughts that I had when I first went into the steering committee. And I'm currently the chair of the Wine Grape Commission. And I came back after seeing the world because I love Lodi, and there's a legacy in Lodi, not just for my family, but for the region itself. And this bid, like Kendra said, came, and we started working on it because we felt it could give Lodi what it needed. Nothing is perfect. But I will say now, when I look at the financials today, if this bid doesn't move forward, there might not be a Lodi wine, and that's what I'm in favor of. So, in retrospect for me, I want to see a future in Lodi. I am a millennial consumer, and when I travel out of the area, I don't really care if there's an extra tax. Half the time, I'm too drunk to notice. And that's something I should admit, but I'm enjoying the community, my life, the experience, and I support every single one of these wineries, and I will continue to support every single one of these wineries because I care about this region. But because of that, I am in favor of this bid, and it doesn't mean much, maybe, because I don't have a winery tasting room, I'm not taking on the financial burden that some of these wineries will, but I have seen growers the last 30 years really struggle. Well, they were doing really well, but the last five years, really struggled. My own dad is getting up in the middle of the night at 60 years old, and he has no idea if his fruit is gonna sell. So this, this $450,000 that we don't have, it's only gonna get less and less. And these growers deserve more, and they've spent 30 years working on this commission. So that, to me, I don't normally speak out like this, but I am for this bid because of that reason. And I love all the wineries that have come in here to speak positive for it or against it. They're wonderful people, and this community's amazing. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that, like, as a millennial consumer, as a grower, as someone who has a small wine brand, this bid is gonna do good. We also no longer have an event, Zin Fest anymore, and that would be huge to answer one of someone's comments, that would be able to be developed now with the winery talent. And I think that's really important. Thank you. Sorry for going over the beep.
You're fine. You, you beat the red light. You did good. Anybody else, before we bring you back to the board? Okay. Supervisor Ding?
Thank you. Spoken like a true Stokes, by the way.
I didn't hurt, Stan.
No, no, no. No, I'm very proud of you. So, my fellow supervisors, you can imagine how much fun this weekend has been for me. These are all my friends, these are my family, and we all want the same thing. There's some, some differences of opinion. Janice, I'm a little hurt, I thought I was the facilitator. So when you said you were looking for one, I'm going, wait a minute. I, I've got the arrows and knives and so forth to prove it. I was back in DC about three, four months ago, and my, my original intent to go back there was, was the duty drawbacks that New Zealand is getting, pumping in foreign juice here. And I was meeting with Frank Lucas from Oklahoma, the senior-most member of the AG Committee. And then I went in and met with Mike Thompson from, from Napa, Sonoma, who also is the lead congressman for the Wine Institute. And for those of you listening that don't know what the Wine Institute is, it's kind of the, the, the big giant version of what you see here. The Wine Institute is controlled by Galloway and Davi, all, all the big boys. And I, I was trying to get Mike to help us with this, this duty drawback that New Zealand was, was profiting from. And he said, Steve, the only way you're gonna get that done is you guys in Lodi have got to get organized. He goes, the, you know, how am I gonna convince my growers with the Wine Institute? You know, they got a, they got a heavy hand. And, and they do. I mean, I've had some recognizable last names come into the restaurant over the last month that wanted to kind of educate me on why I was wrong on this. This bid is very important to our district, and it's not just about the marketing and advertising, it is getting organized. And it affects a heck of a lot, more than just marketing. It affects things like, you know, what we do about the due-to drawback and the wine juices that are coming in to Lodi. It talks, it's about dealing with the wine ordinance, and, you know, how do, how do we, do we adjust it? How do we make that more profitable for, for all of us in San Joaquin County? So I would like to make a motion, and there might be some other supervisors, but I intend to make a motion to move forward with this, along with that legalese mumbo jumbo that you wanted to attach in there as well.
Supervisor Gardeya?
I just got one quick question. How long will this tax last?
Five years.
That's it.
So, the, the hard part for me is, unfortunately, these things, the, the majority part of it rules. So, I mean, going forward, all of these things, and I, I kind of hope that we made those recommendations to meet and get that stuff ironed out. And this, going forward, is not gonna stop that, right? Because I think, like you just said, we're stronger together. And the divide that we see here is not healthy for a, a business. And I get it on both sides of it, because me, I'm thinking, hey, if the commission can't do some of this marketing that we have going forward, I understand that this will be kind of ongoing money that, for the next five years, that you can do those outreach and some of the things that you possibly wouldn't have. I do understand, though, because these are all friends, and the, the Warmer Dams, she left here, and they bought a winery, and we're getting, you know, this is really close to home for us, because it's family and it's friends, not only for Supervisor Ding, but for all of us here. And we want to see our region do better. That, that crop report was pretty depressing. We're seeing some of the crops come back, but wine grapes, we're not one of them. So, so it's hard for me to make the decisions, because, you know, it's folks that we're seeing on both sides of this, and people are very passionate. But I do think we're stronger together. I do think you need to make a better effort to fix these questions that are coming forward if you do do this, and, and make it so that we can feel comfortable the next hearing that we come back, if this goes forward. And I think, obviously, Supervisor Ding wants it, and I usually follow the supervisor whose area it is, because it's his backyard. Also, I'm an alcoholic, so I don't drink, so I'm sorry that I don't partake in buying your guys' wine, and I apologize for that. But those are just the things that, how I weigh it as a supervisor, and how the folks that come here, and I mean, this list kind of says it, I mean, in weighted or not weighted, I mean, obviously, I, I don't think that they'd be willing to cheat on this, because I think it's integrity. And if you're gonna tax people in the community, I think that there needs to be integrity, so that's why I'm trusting it, and I appreciate Ed for coming up with that solution for, hey, we'll seal this. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, and it's very hard, but Supervisor Ding, it's his, it's his area, and I hear it. I just wish that, you know what I mean, everybody could get together and play better in the sandbox, because I think it is better, stronger together.
Supervisor Rickman, you would like to speak? Saw your name on there, sorry, before I started.
Oh, yeah, I took it off, but I'll go ahead and speak. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for being here this afternoon, this morning afternoon. You know, we appreciate it. And when you have issues like this, it's never, it's never easy. And, you know, as our Chairman mentioned, you know, you know, a lot of, when we have these issues like this, and it's pretty much confined in a district, this will be Supervisor Ding's district, and we, we refer to him or that district as the expert, and rightfully so, because he spends a lot more time in Lodi than I do, and he's all the way up north, I'm all the way down south. So, you know, when you have these issues, you know, you, you have to listen to your supervisor, and you listen to what Supervisor Ding has done. I mean, you know, meeting with many of you, I guess he knows many of you, the public meetings, and also, I can tell you firsthand knowledge that he has been fighting hard for the, the wine industry. He's been up in DC, he's been in Sacramento. If there's anybody who's an expert on this board about wine, it's this gentleman sitting right next to me. So, with that being said, as I've done, you know, pretty much since I've been on this board, is if, if it's confined to a district, or if then another supervisor's district, you know, I defer to his expertise, and, and at this point, I, I do agree with Supervisor Ding. So with that being said, Chair, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have a first. Is there another, somebody to second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, could you take a vote? Motion passes five to zero to go on to the next level of you guys getting the other cities and coming back for the next hearing, which date, and the sealed bid part is part of the motion. Counselor?
Mr. Chair, you said the word "seal." Could we take a five-minute break, real quick?
Five-minute break? Yes. We'll have a five-minute break till 12:10.
Yes. We'll have a five-minute break till 12:10.
Okay. Are we ready?
Just a moment, Chair.
Oh, we're waiting for county counsel.
There he is. All right. At this time, moving back to discussion item number one, approve flying the POW MIA flag on National POW MIA Recognition Day, Friday, September nineteenth. Orifice vote required. Supervisor Gardeia, you have the floor.
So this is one of the reasons why we put together the ad hoc committee. We've had a couple of meetings to kind of discuss a direction or a recommendation that we're looking at doing. So this is a formality. It's a nationally-recognized commemorative flag, and it's pretty much all I got. Hopefully, in the future, we won't have to bring this out to a discussion. We already have named flags in place.
Perfect. Fellow supervisors, comments, questions?
Yes, Chairman. As Supervisor mentioned, this is a nationally-recognized flag, and not even saying it's a commemorative flag, but a national recognition. I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you for the clarification. At this time, I'll open it up. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on flying the POW MIA flag on September nineteenth? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Anybody from the board? Or do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Madam Clerk, call for the vote. Motion passes five to zero. September nineteenth is what day of the week? Friday? Okay. So see everybody here for the raising of the POW MIA flag on September nineteenth. Okay, moving on, we now are going to discuss an item. Discuss adopting a resolution urging the governor of the state of California to execute the will of the voters and budget appropriately for the implementation of Proposition Thirty-Six. Supervisor Ding, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of our main priorities is to keep the public safe. And it's also to manage the checkbook of the county. The sheriff's department, the district attorney's office, they're not going to quit doing their job. And all these priorities that we, as the voter, implemented by about sixty-eight percent of the vote, the money's got to come from somewhere. We're not living in the era of, you know, COVID flush funds and everything else. And so I think we're going to find out here in a year or two, while we keep spending money, we're going to have a problem. And when it comes time for, you know, contract negotiations with employees or, you know, any other extra programs, you know, eventually, all this money comes from the same place. You can call it, oh, it's a grant from the state or a grant from the federal government, whatever you want. It is going to hit our bottom line. So we need the dollars, you know, the state spending money on bullet trains and elections and, you know, water tunnels to nowhere. We need the number-one priority taken care of first, and that's public safety. And so we're just asking for the governor to do what he constitutionally directed to do, and that's fund Prop Thirty-Six in the will of the voters.
Perfect. Supervisors, questions, comments? Supervisor Dolew, or Vice Chair Dolew, I'm sorry?
I would like to hear from Sheriff Widrow, if he's still here.
We need music, like when he comes down.
Some walk-up, some walk-up music?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I do agree with Supervisor Ding. The proposition was passed almost a year ago. Four point eight million for the county is a lot of money. Sheriff Widrow, how are we doing so far without any state help? And we are almost, I think, eight months into the year.
Well, you know, this is impactful for our entire county, to our entire budget, when we get things like this, that the voters tell us that they want to happen. And as you all know, we're very proactive here in San Joaquin County. Our officers do a really good job of going after bad guys that are stealing stuff and hold them accountable. And we have a DA now that is very proactive and trying to hold those folks accountable in court, the best that he can do. So, you know, I can't agree more. You know, we need support from the state. When the people speak, we listen. That's our job as elected official. I'm an elected official, and what I do in my county is what my citizens want me to do, not my own personal choice as to what I think I should be doing. And so it should be the same way all the way up in our government. That's what you folks do on a daily basis. You listen to your constituents. I get your calls, their concerns, and I go and I act on them. And that's what we're all supposed to do. And this is costing us a lot of money because we are very aggressive about enforcing laws and protecting our citizens' businesses and holding criminals accountable. And when we arrest them, it costs a lot of money to have our officers out there doing that and put themselves in dangers. And then when we book them in our jails, that costs a lot of money to have them in there and hold them while they're going to court. And it costs a lot of money for the DA to prosecute these charges. And hopefully, we come across a judge that will hold these people accountable and follow the law the way it's supposed to be done. And or we try and get them into a program where they don't go that life of crime again. But all that is on the backs of our taxpayers here in our county, and we should be getting the funding we need from the state to do. And it is all the same pie, but, you know, we're paying a lot of taxes to the state, and we're paying taxes here that go to the county. And the state should be supporting what the citizens want. So, you know, I normally don't get involved in the politics side of it. I try and stay pretty neutral so that I represent all my constituents across the county here. But I think with sixty-eight percent of the vote saying that this is what we want, I can tell you as the head of my budget that we try and be very cognizant about how we spend our money. We need the state to back this up. This is what the people want, and we can't just keep letting people violate the crime and not keep holding them accountable for it. So we need the help.
Thank you, sir. I do support this resolution. I think the state needs to send the money. We don't know when it's going to come, if it comes, but until then, are we okay enforcing Thirty-Six?
Yeah, we're very blessed here. You guys and our CAO's office have done an amazing job with our budget, and you've saved for the rainy days that we know could be coming. And but a lot of counties are not. I listen every three months to a lot of sheriffs that are really, really struggling, and their counties are struggling. And we plan for these type of things that come down, these unfunded mandates and things like that. And so we're doing okay so far, but that doesn't mean we always will be. So I think the state legislators and the governors need to step up and at least do what the will of the people is.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Ding, do you want to let DA Freitas speak towards this?
He might be Switzerland and not having an opinion.
I mean, last year, we all did get together as a board and as a county and support Prop Thirty-Six to hold people more accountable for the things that they've done.
Yes, you did. And I thank the sheriff for teeing this up, but he's exactly right. The overwhelming will of the people, sixty-eight, seventy percent, I'm not going to quibble, but the people really wanted to see this happen. And right now, the problem comes down to is the funding behind this. One of the, I think, the reasons it was so successful is because it was comprehensive, that not only were we making crime illegal again, so to speak, but also we were treating individuals, addiction, theft problems, so that not only were we attacking organized retail theft, but also the homeless problem and the addiction problem. And the important components of making all three of those work is that we have these treatment programs that are in place. I'm proud to tell you that since the enactment of Prop Thirty-Six, we filed over a hundred and forty felony cases for the theft component. And in the drug component, we filed over a hundred cases. The theft component were catch and release. These were the worst of the worst. The individuals had kept hitting our businesses over and over again. Some had in excess of twenty prior arrests, and we're still out on the streets and still hitting our businesses. The hundred that were in the addiction and the drug component, these are individuals that if we didn't stop them, they were literally going to kill themselves through repeat, you know, our fentanyl crisis and our other problems out there. So now by giving them incentive to get the treatment, to do the addiction programs, get the recovery, this is making a huge difference in our lives. But for the state, you know, to just pass their last budget, to not dedicate money for this is, it's very troublesome and very disappointing. We've also seen that other counties have taken a more aggressive stance that we don't have to take at this time, that they're now suing the state. I think Riverside is suing the state. San Luis Obispo is suing the state to mandate the payment of these funds. I think we're in a nice situation that we can wait and see and see how those lawsuits do turn out. But this proclamation is a very nice way of saying that we are united to help in our community and making it better. So thank you for this opportunity to talk. Chairman Canepa, Vice Chairman Dolew, Administrator Regal.
Thank you, Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And, yeah, I'd kind of repeat, but not only did, what, sixty-eight, seventy percent, but every county in the state, so fifty-eight counties in the state passed it. I mean, this is kind of unheard of, right? And it's interesting, during the May 2025 budget presentation, mid-May, as part of explaining the revised spending plan that omitted Prop Thirty-Six funding, this is what the governor stated. There was a lot of supervisors in the counties. There was a lot of supervisors in the counties that promoted it. So this is their opportunity to step up and fund it. That's coming from our governor. So what the state of California, our governor, is trying to do is shift the responsibility to local governments, to the counties and to the cities, the mayors, like he always does. You know, the governor needs to step up. Our legislators that work for the residents of, I'll speak for this county, need to put pressure on the governor to, you know, fund Prop 36. As the sheriff mentioned, it's the will of the people. It passes by such a huge amount as our DA, you know, stated, you know, make crime illegal again in the state of California. So, that's it.
And through the chair, Supervisor Rickman, you're exactly right. The law didn't say that this could be funded by the counties and then asked the state for reimbursement. The proposition as passed by the people was very, very specific. The state shall fund these programs. It is state mandated. So it's an interesting interpretation that you've presented, and it does seem to be conflicting with the will of the people.
But do you expect anything less than from our governor? Or, you don't have to answer that. Thank you.
You know what? I'm an expert on a lot of things, and, you know, I feel strongly both ways.
Good answer. That's very politically correct.
I used to be a lawyer.
Okay. Any other further questions? Thank you, thank you, Sheriff Widrow. DA Freitas for your comments and standing together to...
Thank the board for, one, is its support through Prop 36, and also for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Only thing, do we do public comment already?
Oh, sorry.
If, I was just gonna, you know, I'm just gonna ask our counselor, if there is cases out there in cities being, you know, seated or something, I want to know what those are. I mean, I know this board has, you know, spoken fervently about, you know, I'm not saying this is unfunded mandates and so on. So if there is a lawsuit being put on by other cities in opposition to what the state is doing, then we need to know about it.
Yeah, I wrote that down, and I'm going to look into it. I don't know that if, as you probably know, I'm on the County Council's Association Committee that deals with unfunded mandates. I don't know if this falls into that category because it was passed by the voters, not by the legislature. But I am interested in finding out what the basis of the suits are, and I'll look into that. And to the DA, I wrote down San Luis Obispo, the county of San Luis Obispo, or is it city?
I believe the county is San Luis Obispo and Riverside County. But I'm also a member of the California District Attorney Association, which was a major proponent in making this proposition happen. I'll work closely with County Counsel Attorney Kieranin and give him that information because we have blogs that discuss this, so be more than happy to help out.
I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing what that is.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further comments, any public comments? Sheriff, were you itching or were you raising your hand? Okay. Do we have, coming back to the board, seeing no public comment.
So motion to pass the resolution?
A second.
Have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote, please? All right, passes five zero. All right. That was number two. We are going to three. We did. Number four, General Services. So appropriate appropriation increase of fifteen million dollars in the 2025-2026 Public Improvement Budget for Six South El Dorado Tenant Improvement Project. Dan Wertz and Shelley, I'm not going to try your last name, so we'll leave it. Capital Projects Administrator and General Services Director, you have the floor.
So, good afternoon. Chair Canepa, Supervisors, County Administrator Regallo, County Counsel, Dan Wertz, the Director of General Services. And with me today is Shelley Thies, the Capital Projects Administrator. Shelley joined the department in April of 2025, and she has a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering and is a registered civil engineer. She's been working in the field for over twenty years in civil construction and project management. Her experience is with the county of Santa Clara and the city of Mountain House. And at this point, Shelley, I'll turn the presentation over to Shelley, and she'll provide an update on the Six South Tenant Improvement Project for the District Attorney.
Good afternoon. Chair Supervisor Canepa, Vice Chair Supervisor Dolew, Supervisor Gardea, Supervisor Ding, Supervisor Rickman, County Administrator Regallo. My name is Shelley Thies, and I am General Services' new Capital Projects Administrator. General Services Department is here today to discuss additional appropriations for the Six South El Dorado Building Capital Improvement Project and answer any questions. We have prepared a slide presentation for your use. In 2021, the board approved the county's acquisition of the 1974 building, which consisted of seven floors, a basement, a parking lot, and a three-story parking garage for ten point eight million dollars. The original project consisted of significant renovations of the interior of the building and selected landscaping improvements. In 2023, the board approved an initial project budget of twenty-four point five million with an anticipated completion date of October 2024. Subsequently, in 2024, General Services attained budget improvements to the projects in the amount of fifteen point five and eighteen point five million for ultimately increasing the project's budget from twenty-four point five million to fifty-eight point five million and extending the project's completion date from October 2024 to July of 2025. So there were several, there's been several factors that have gone on to increase the budget and delay the completion date. But the three main components that have led us here today are primarily not addressing the critical systems of the building, this very old building, right away, and to delaying it until after the completion of the interior. The, there was a report that was completed initially, and it had identified that the heating, the air conditioning, the air return, the sewer system, the roof, other key components that require the building to operate had already exceeded their useful life. The other major problem was the delivery method. The decision to use the job order contracting. It's referred to commonly in the industry as JOC. JOC is not intended for this type of project. JOC is typically used for emergency repairs. So, for example, when a traffic signal has been hit in an intersection and we need to clear that intersection right away, local jurisdictions use the JOC to have the contractor immediately go out, clear the intersection, put up the safety requirements that are needed, and then come back in thirty or sixty days when the material is obtained to put back the traffic signal. That's the intention of a JOC. A JOC contract is not intended to be used for multiple years. This project has extended, obviously, more than one fiscal year. And by using the JOC method in combination with a phased design, it just set us in a position to fail before we even got out the gate. Currently, under JOC, we have three prime contractors. When we have three contractors, it makes it nearly impossible to stay on schedule because there's conflicts that go on. You've got sharing of subs. And with the JOC itself, the JOC has limitations. It has limitations to its funding. It has funding limitations, and then also because of scheduling, you can only schedule so much in that one JOC year. And then combining that with phasing the designs, these design packages were coming out by the designer by floor. So if you can just imagine, you have a design package that comes out, and that floor is already estimated to be completed at over six million dollars, there's no way that that contractor could complete that floor within that JOC year because they've already exceeded the allowable amount. So this is what happens when you try to combine two different types of delivery methods into a project of this size. It results in ongoing budget increases and schedule delays and impacts to both the budget and the schedule. So this table represents snapshots in time of how the project's budget and anticipated completion dates have been impacted. In July of 2023, at the end of fiscal year, project's costs had totaled up to thirteen million dollars. One year later, an additional nineteen million dollars were paid and encumbered, bringing the total cost at that point in time to thirty-two million. At the beginning of the fiscal year 2324, an additional nine million dollars had already been encumbered, bringing the budget to forty-one million dollars. By the end of December 2024, with all encumbrances and costs, the budget had already exceeded and had reached a total of fifty-six point nine million. Within fiscal year 2425, twenty point five million dollars of costs were paid, bringing the total project cost to date to fifty-eight million dollars. This leaves us with a remaining balance of five hundred thousand to date. We've learned a lot from this project. And we've made several corrections so that we don't do something like this ever again. We've had a change in leadership. We've taken a look at how we operate. We've already started to put in better communications with other departments. And we've already started creating forms and processes and procedures. Again, the intent is never to deliver a project like this again and/or use the JOC in this manner. And capital will be using the JOC in the intended manner it was designed for. On this next slide, this first table represents the total cost paid and encumbered from the start of the project through June of 2025 and the corresponding costs estimated to complete the project. Construction, we've combined, we've combined these into three simple categories. But construction includes items like the design, the contractors, the inspection, the CM services, the, and also the critical maintenance that, or the critical system repairs that we're doing. The soft cost includes items such as permitting, staff costs, ISD improvements, equipment, security, furniture, and other miscellaneous costs. The second table below represents the funding sources from which the additional funding would come from. Following board approval, General Services Department's next steps will include completing the building, moving staff as quickly and efficiently as possible into their new working environment. We will complete a property value assessment, and we will come back to the board with an updated report. General Services Department is requesting the Board of Supervisors to approve an additional fifteen million dollars in the 2025-26 Public Improvement Budget for this project. This concludes our presentation. Dan and Connie, our Director and Assistant Director, are also here for any additional questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. I just want to give a shout out to Bill Smith, who's in the back of the building there, that always is kind of the eyes and ears for our construction side, a retired county employee. I want to thank you for your due diligence and kind of following and helping make sure that our tax dollars are spent in a good manner. Let me go to Supervisor Gardea real quick, and then I will go to you or open it up to the public, if you could wait one minute. Unless you want to yield your time, it's up to you.
I'll yield my time after your public comment.
Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. This project, I did the initial walkthrough on this project after Bamba did the assessment on the value of the building. The building was bought at a dollar forty-seven a square foot. The amount of money we have into it now takes it up to eleven hundred and forty-seven dollars a square foot, which is insane. The oversight on this project has been an abject failure. We just keep dumping money into a hole, and we're not getting anything back out of it for our money. General Services has been run by a bunch of accountants. The oversight is not construction-based. I get a lot of calls from a lot of General Service employees that are friends of mine throughout the whole Capital Projects, General Services Department. The morale is at an all-time low because of how things are being run. And something needs to be done, whether it's a change in leadership or what has to be done. Because running a JOC project that size, you're right, is insane. But dumping money into a building that is going to appraise for about twenty-three million when it's done, dumping a hundred million into a building that's only going to be worth twenty-three million when it's done, is also insane. I don't know if anybody in this room had their property taxes raised last year, but mine was. And to be a better steward of how our tax dollars are spent needs to be done. This is what angers me to no end, is we're not watching out of money spent. You know, I don't know if Sandra's asleep at the wheel or what, because there needs to be oversight on all these areas. You know, we've got projects coming up. We've got a B well project coming up. And at this rate, the B well is going to be done sometime in 2035, you know, and it's going to cost us a billion dollars, you know. Public health was an overrun of two years and an abject failure there, too. You know, we need to tighten it up. It needs to be better. You need to have construction people providing oversight. You guys need to put an oversight committee in place. You guys need to put an oversight committee in place and make it happen. There's nobody overseeing these people. And they just keep asking for more money, give me more, throw it in a big dark hole. The, the chillers over there are almost new. They're, the chillers in this building are older than the chillers in that building. I went over and ran those chillers the first time they started it up. What's wrong with your heating and air conditioning system? How come, how come, what's gone wrong with it? So I just hope you pay heed to what I say, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Guardia.
I, I appreciate the, recognizing the, the issues that have come up in this project, you know, and then we started this project in 2021. I, I think the, the biggest thing I, there's a couple of things that, that were said today. You know, Sheriff, Sheriff Whitaker brought up, you know, this is on the backs of, back of the taxpayers. I look at it as a situation that we're, we're pot committed in this building. I mean, we're at the, we're rounding third base. I, I don't really see any other option other than finishing it. I see a need for our, our DA's office to, to be housed in this building. For me, the biggest thing is just learning from our mistakes and, and making sure that, that we don't, don't do them again. One of the things that stuck out in my head was, you know, before we, you know, we, when we purchased this building, we thought it was a great deal. But there was never any type of inspection done prior to us purchasing the building. To me, that way, we wouldn't go out and buy, I wouldn't go out and buy a house unless I had a home inspection done on it, you know, before I went into escrow. So for me, in the future, is if the county's going to bring forward any type of purchases on any type of new buildings, that would be definitely a request for my, for, for, for my district is to make sure that we know what we're getting into, you know, especially when we're buying a building, you know, that's, that's of, of age. So, you know, from my perspective, we're pot committed to this. Learn from, learn from our mistakes and, and move forward and make sure that we have things in place that protect us for the future.
Thank you Supervisor, Vice Chair Dollywall.
Thank you, sir. I agree with Mr. Smith that we have to be very careful how we spend taxpayers' money. But in this situation, you know, you, you ask yourself what to do? If we, if we don't approve this item, it creates a bigger problem. 70 million will get stuck. The district attorney's staff will not be able to, to relocate. And then what do we do? I, I think like my colleagues said on my right side that we, we have to learn from this mistake and make sure, moving forward, that these things are not repeated. And if it's my, I, you know, the strongest word I can put in my opinion is that if it happens again, then people should be and will be held accountable. Let's learn a lesson and let's not repeat. If we, if we make a mistake and then we don't learn, we continue to make again and again, that's not a mistake, that becomes a pattern. And I don't think the, the taxpayers of this county are going to forgive anybody having that type of pattern. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Ding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was wondering, Shelley, that presentation you just gave, I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the timeline and, and first off, nobody was here when this thing was started. The big mistakes happened in '22. I mean, I'm looking at your presentation, it says, you know, '23 on down. But, but even going from '23, Supervisor Dollywall, here's my problem is you said if this happens again, and I'm thinking, I don't even know how to plum my bathtub. I mean, I can't oversee this. There, the, there's no, there's no changes. So, so there's no way we're going to know. I mean, they just came to us, how many months ago and we gave them another four or five million? This is $14 million. My, here's my problem. This, this Six South Al Dorado, that's not the prize. That's not the final show. We've got the Be Well campus coming up. We've got so many things going on. We can't bet it all on this building. I mean, 20, holy Toledo. We've spent more than the value of this building after we add this 14 million. I am not convinced that we have the oversight, the structure in place to even know if it's happening again. I, I think we need to take a top down look at the department and see if changes need to be made. I, I think Shelley is going to need some resources in there too. I think we, we, we call it a day right now and halt. I don't think we put another damn dime into this thing until we make sure that not only Six South Al Dorado, Be Well, everything else we move forward, we need to have somebody in charge that knows what the hell they're doing. Because up to this point, that hasn't happened.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, staff, and thank you, the public for, you know, speaking on this. I appreciate it. Yeah, this is a, a huge jump and, you know, you have a right to be concerned. I think we all here, as you can tell, we all are concerned of what's going on. Looking at the time, you know, timeframe, 2021 or so, and, you know, holding the people accountable, those people are, you know, are gone. You know, from, you know, our C O to the Director of General Services and so on. But as my colleagues had mentioned, you know, there has to be a change. And, you know, we can't just pass the buck either, you know, and saying, hey, this happened in 2021, all those folks are gone, so it's not our fault. But that's not the way it works. So, you know, the Director of General Services, Capitol Improvement Projects, there has to be tighter cost controls, for one. There should be more frequent budget reviews, mostly we're having, you know, these different issues. As Supervisor Ding mentioned, how do we know this isn't continuing? I mean, we do have several, several different projects in the loop right now that we're counting on being built. And, you know, cost overruns and, you know, it, it, it affects the bottom line, the budget. I mean, we just had our budget review or we had just approved a budget, budget, what was that, in July? June, July? And so, you know, this is something wasn't planned for. What can, what can we do to put safeguards? What kind of, I should, I should say, what kind of safeguards can we put in place to assure that this isn't continuing and this, you know, won't happen again? Because, you know, if this does happen again, you know, there's going to be a, a level of accountability that, you know, you guys are probably not going to like. So what can we put in place right now to safeguard and prevent this?
So, I mean, so a couple of things. During the history that we provided to you, there was a culture from the General Services Agency of not bringing items as big as this to the public so the board could actually see and understand what, any increases or project scope changes happened in that. So at least two times that this budget was increased. It was included in the June report for the upcoming fiscal year. It was a line item in the public improvement plan budget. So unless you dug into the detail, you were not going to see from that, you know, two to 600 page document, that there was an increase to the, to the project. Since I became the director, we did bring an item in December where we increased the budget by 8.5 mil, 18.5 million dollars to the current 58.5. And, and there was resistance to bring that forward. Because people didn't want these conversations to take place at that point in time. It was easier to appropriately put it into a budget document mid-year or proposed where it doesn't stand out as much. That's not the way I operate and that I believe things of this nature need to be brought forward. But when we did come forward in December, there were no questions raised by anyone at that point in time. Also, we have to remove emotion from things. One thing we didn't really highlight was in, on February 1st of 2022, when the Board of Supervisors approved a resol, a resolution to seek reimbursement for bond funds for certain Capitol projects. This was one of the Capitol projects that was named at that point in time. And so there was a rush because the purchase price, the purchase happened in December of 2020, 2022. So if it was completed within three years, there was potentially the ability for the county to issue bonds to recoup that 10.8 million dollars. The thing was, based on what we're putting in place, not looking at the whole infrastructure of the building and making sure you're replacing all the major mechanicals. We told the board back in November 16th that we were going to come back at later dates with the, with a plan to address those systems once the tenant had moved in. As we moved forward with this project and we, we started learning more about what was going on, it was very clear that there were some major systems in that building that were not going to be operational and we were not going to be able to move the district attorney in there, such as the sewer system and others, without fixing those. Otherwise, we would have had to move them in and move them right back out. And that's not the way we should be handling.
What year was, I'm sorry, what year was that? The, what date you just gave about the sewage and all?
So the, the, many of the sewer pipes in the building were clogged and they weren't going to be addressed in the initial phase. Through conversations with some of the contractors, we learned that there was a significant buildup and they went to hydrojet them. They had to come, the water wouldn't flow all the way through because there was excess buildup. So they had to come back and in walls that were completed, they had to reopen those walls, cut out the areas, replace seals, re-put the walls back together so that we would have a building that didn't back up.
Yeah, I, I don't need to get that pinpoint, I'm just saying, what's the date?
The, the, in the last, would you, when did you have those conversations?
Are you asking for the date of the report or are you asking for when we discovered?
When, when we were notified that, when we came, when we had notice of this. What he was just explaining, you just mentioned the sewage and the pipes. So, what date?
We realized that the critical systems, we, management became aware of that roughly May of this year.
Thank you.
Current management.
So what controls, I guess, that the answer is, still hasn't been asked or answered, excuse me. I asked it. What control are going to be put in place?
Well, Shelley, Shelley, who has 20 years of experience and is a civil engineer, is now responsible and in charge of, of this project, the Six South, to review the documents, make sure that the plans are permissible, make sure that the conversations that are taking place with the contractors are things that are within the current scope and appropriations that have been authorized, not something that they'll get paid for in the future that's not under their, the current existing contract. So Shelley's been reviewing all that information and has been able to identify that items were promised for contractors due, so they ended up working at risk because we didn't have the appropriate appropriations in place because the Jock year, which roughly caps out at about $6 million, their contract was, was locked in in full back in December of 2024. So we had to wait till the new year.
So what tighter, or what cost control are we going to be putting in? Because last thing I want to see, I mean, now we have $15 million in front of us, right? Yea or nay? Last thing I want to see is here in six months, hey, you know what? We found this problem, can we have another 10, 15 million dollars? I can't lose any more hair, but you can imagine what, what this board is going to do and say. So what cost control are we going to have in place? And my, the other question is budget reviews, I mean, frequent budget reviews. So, I mean, I'm thinking like, what, monthly? You know, responding to our C O, responding to this board, letting us, letting us know what's going on? Where, how our tax dollars are being spent? I'm going to yield my time, Chair.
Thank you, County Administrator. And that was one thing I just wanted to say before you start is I have the utmost confidence in your team and, and Brenda and I think all those folks. This, I think, was the perfect storm of what not to do. But the buck does stop with us here. So, I mean, this is on our watch. And I mean, and it just was, the Jock thing should have never been used. So that was the first thing. The second thing is all the critical infrastructure that they did after we bought the building. I think was another, one of the glaring, most glaring things is why you would do an inspection after you bought a building that needed all these infrastructure window replacements, heating and air conditioning replacements, sewer line, you know, being fixed and having to be undone to fix those problems. I mean, this is, this is exactly what you don't want. The thing is, is I mean, if you do put a construction oversight committee, they're going to be volunteers or, I mean, how do you do that? And then how are they accountable too? It's us electeds that are running the budget for the San Joaquin County. So, I mean, we have to put those in place. I know that I meet monthly with, with Dan and, and go over those things. So I will let you speak to what we're going to do and how we're not going to let this repeat itself, obviously, because I think that's the most important moral of the story is we do need to get it done and get the district attorney out of the old building that they're in now into those new Six South Al Dorado. So you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Chair. And I guess to answer the question, because I, I appreciate that I haven't heard the question answered as well, I can say for my, for my part and from my office, we will have a monthly review, at least, if not maybe twice a month, to make sure that this project, it does stay on track. As it's already been said multiple times, a lot of us were not here, even in the county or in our positions when the purchase took place. You know, as far as what, if there, I know there was an appraisal done, but as far as an assessment of what type of work needs to, to be done, to change it from a gym to a DA's office, I know that was not done. But, and, and Shelley has, I think, tried to do a good job of pointing out what has happened up to this point and how we're going to fix it. But you have my word and I've already talked to, well, mostly Dan about this. At some point, we need to own it. And so that means the current management and myself, I inherited this just like this board did, just like these two did, but we have to get it done. And so if we need the experts, and we did have a meeting, I don't know, this week, was it this week? Yesterday, I guess, we had a meeting. And because we do have so many other projects, I have asked GSD to see, do we need to bring in consultants, some experts? Because, thank you, while I appreciate Mr. Smith's comments, I am not an expert in building, in construction. And so we will bring in, if we need, to bring in those experts to assist them in getting all these projects done. Because we do have a lot of big, huge projects moving forward. So as far as the budget, making sure that they stay on track, timely, you know, we're going to get this done because we do need to get the DA in. If the DA is here, I'm sure he's anxiously awaiting. If I could just add a little bit more, this additional, and it's 15 million unfortunately Supervisor Ding, I think you were saying 14, it's 15 that we're asking for, that GSD is asking for. Yeah, excuse me. I want to say that does include, there were some issues that I don't believe were in the original scope that now I've asked GSD, you know what? This, we're going one time since I'm in this spot. We're going one more time to the board. And so let's put in everything that we need. And I know those were some seals around windows, some bollocks. I'm not sure what else was all in there. But there were additional things that were not in the original scope. But on top of that, yes, was there scope creep, whatever we, we did. There is an additional ask here in order for it to get done. But you have my word, at least on my watch, we will do everything to make sure that they're staying on budget, that the project is getting done. And from what Shelley had said, 99% that we will not be coming, and I won't, I won't allow it.
Sandy, one, one thing I, through the chair, one thing I want to clarify for this question from Supervisor Guardia. There was, through our research as we've been preparing for this meeting, there was a property assessment done in 2019 on that property by LDA Partners issued by the county. Several of these items that weren't included in the initial scope and were said going to be deferred until later that we are taking care of now, were identified in that. But decisions were made to push them off and have facility maintenance take care of those at subsequent. take care of those at subsequent time periods, not in the initial TI tenant improvements of that project.
So kind of like kicking the can down the road so that we didn't have to incur those costs, right? I mean?
I don't, I don't want to make assumptions for, you know, the prior, but that's, based on, based on the facts that are in the document, yes, they were pushed, they would be pushed down to take care of at a later date to try to stay within.
Another capital improvement budget. Okay. Supervisor Gardea, you're up. And then we have Dolly Wall, Ding and Rickman.
Sorry. I mean, you call what I want, kick it down, down the road. To me, it was trying to, trying to create that this project was going to be much cheaper to, to bring out and put in, into place for, for the DA. So, you know, with all that said, my, my question is, can, can you explain the difference between a building that, you know, that's, you know, built back in the 70s versus Bewell and how it's going to be managed in, in a different form? And what type of safeguards are in place to protect us from having somewhat the same issue?
Well, for the project like Bewell or SB 1022, those, the county had hired construction management firms, AECOM, that is working with the county to, to help provide that higher level of construction management oversight and also with the morgue. With the project that we had for, for Six South, the construction management firm was the Gordian Group and that, again, from the, not potentially using Joc for a multi-year project, also having their construction management firm oversee those Joc contractors just at this point in time doesn't feel, in hindsight, doesn't feel was the best delivery method. We're doing a major renovation of that building that was going to take multiple years. We should have had the plans and specs completed, put that out so that one GC, general contractor, would have won the award, that would have had completed plans, that they could have then addressed everything in the building at one point in time, instead of the delivery method that we chose.
So we got, so if we have a, if we're building a new building, we have one, pretty much one general contractor is responsible to subbing out to other contractors. So you have one person or one contractor group responsible versus multi?
Yes.
So that, I mean, to me, that's probably the biggest safeguard that protects us that we don't go down the same rabbit hole again.
I, I'm just, I, I'm not comfortable, if this was my checkbook, which it is, if, you know, we're, we're spending other people's money here. And I, and I'm just thinking, if I was a private company, would I go, okay, don't do it again and write a check for $14 million? There, there's still a lot of questions about invoices that were paid outstanding with, with no, no receipts on them, no, no tracking of what's been spent, other. This whole thing has been a boondoggle. And while I understand that we've got it all fixed, nobody up here speaks that language. And so, you know, County Administrator, I, I trust you, I really do. But the problem is neither of us speak that language. And until this structure can be explained to me, I've also, you know, when, when was I elected? Beginning of '23? The one thing I've noticed about this department, it seems like you guys have shot all the squeaky wheels. I, it, there's too much, there, there's no noise coming out of the department. There's, you know, I want, I want to know people that are in that department that know, they know what the hell they're doing. And, and I'm just not comfortable with knowing that right now. I'm being told, you know, just give us 15 million, sorry, not 14 million, and don't do it again. But if this was my checkbook and if I was in charge based on this, I'm not writing the check until I'm comfortable with it. So, so my answer is going to be no. And as far as the DA is concerned, yes, we want to get the DA into a building, but he's been told this for two years. What, what's another 15 million? I mean, there, there is absolutely no certainty when it comes to our projects right now. He might be better off finding a different place to go. He might get in there sooner.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I appreciate Supervisor Ding's passion, what he stated. But the problem is, I mean, we don't speak the language. So no matter what, we're going to have to trust our employees. If we don't trust our employees, then, you know, to be honest, we should get new employees, you know. But, I mean, how long do you wait? I mean, the prices aren't going down. So i- if this costs us this much a day, put it down, say, three, four months down the road, it's going to be even worse. So projects aren't getting cheaper, they're just going up. And yeah, you know, we have inherited this mess like what we, our staff has, like I mentioned earlier. And I know our CAO, Sandy got, you know, took a hit from Mr. Smith. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, she wasn't the CAO. She wasn't the, you know, at the beginning of this project. And, you know, I'm not making excuses, you know, but I, I want to explain why I have full confidence in our CAO. I mean, just look at our budget. I mean, look at other counties and look, compared to what San Juan King County is. And other counties are in deficit, in, you know, not hiring employees or letting, you know, letting positions remain stagnant. We're not doing that. I mean, our budget is what it is. It has grown, or you can talk about our, our credit rating and so on. So do I have full confidence in our CAO as she sits here today? Absolutely, I do. And so, but one thing that you mentioned that did concern me is, you know, the transparency side. And ye seen me here preach transparency and I'm a huge advocate of that transparency. So if we are spending money and hiding in the budget, whoever I did that was, hopefully they're not employed here anymore. But if there is a, an issue or a problem, this board needs to know. And at the end of the day, the buck stopped yea with this board, but it's with you guys, you're, you know, our directors, the bosses of, you know, these departments that we depend on. It's on, it's on your shoulders. So if there are issues, if there are problems, you know, we need to know immediately. But one thing I want to see, to put my mind at ease, is the, look at these other CIP projects. You're talk, talking about construction and stuff. It's, we're not doing the JOC, you know, the job order contracting. But I think, you know, even with the Bewell campus, we need to take a double look. And just to make sure we're on the right path forward and with the budget and what you have told this board in the past. I would feel more comfortable that way. So with that being said, I'll yield my time back to you, Chair.
Thank you. I mean, and that was part of it. I mean, even at the Bewell, there's moving parts out there. We went out there and they were bringing dirt from this location. And I know we're not supposed to talk about Bewell, but they're dumping it on that piece of property that we're dealing over there. And then they're taking dirt. And so now part of the Bewell is how do we get it raised up on that side? So that's another cost, you know. But I mean, that's the thing, when you hire a contractor, I mean, there wasn't, there wasn't an engineer's bid on this or estimate, which is part of the problem. And going forward, if you have that, and then you kind of have a scope of, of what they're doing. And I think that was the problem. The scope changed and I think this is the end of it. The windows glazed, I mean, that that building's been sitting in the sun for how many years, beaten down on it. And those are the things I think that this is going to close the door on that and make sure, obviously, that the Joc process is not used because that was the biggest part of it. The, you know, the thing of having the, the study done after we bought it and, and kicking, as I say, the can down the road. But I mean, we're ultimately the stewards of the taxpayers' money. So I, I agree. How do we go about it? Information, budget-wise changes, need to be more transparent to the board. And if we do need to start a committee of construction folks to oversee that, I think that's the next step. And I think that would be it. I mean, if we're going to have construction managers do it, then they need to be held accountable and they need to come and either give presentations to us, you know, and say, hey, we're here, 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 and this is what our timeline is and this is what our scope of services are. And you know what I mean? And I think that would be the, the next best thing and not only having, you know, the county administrators, but I mean, updates on big projects like that. So, I mean, obviously, I've been out to the morgue because I'm very excited about that opening. The, the Honor Farm is opening shortly. I mean, the county is, is, we're buying 50, East Main, 400 East Main, and that was a deal and it'll pay for itself in 17 years. So this was kind of the perfect storm of bad decisions. And this needs to get done. And I think unfortunately, this $15 million needs to go to get it done and that we dare not repeat this. So, I mean, we need to put things in place to protect this. And part of the thing is, we're people working outside of their scopes, obviously, and we need to make sure that there's checks and balances so that this doesn't repeat itself again. Supervisor Rickman.
I'm sorry, Chair. Things keep popping in my, my mind here. And to our county council, when we were looking at, when we look at CIP projects, when we look at RFPs and what we have to do by state law and so on, can we look at the conditions in one of them being, you know, say we hire a construction firm or contractor, that, you know, it comes on time, one, being one of the criteria, and second, within budget? Is there, you know, beside being the lowest bid or so on?
Typically, when we're constructing stuff, we're, we're going to do, the traditional way to do it, which we've moved away from is, is, is the lowest qualified bidder approach. The newer approach we've taken is design build. And yes, you can, we put in those contracts. We put it in RFP, or request for bids, and then, and then we get, and then we award it to somebody. And then we do put in those contracts. They have to do it at a certain cost. And now sometimes they have, they can have some change orders, but they have to justify the change orders. And the, and the board gets to approve those change orders. So the bottom line is, the way you normally contract for construction projects of this nature have a lot of these safeguards built in. If, if they're going over budget, they need to do a change order and that needs to be approved by the board. If the board doesn't think there's justification for it, we can reject the change order. Now, when we do so, they can sue us and they could say there is justification. But the bottom line is that the contracts themselves bind the contractor to a price.
All right. Okay. I mean, and my last question, Chair, then I'll yield my time is to you guys, is 15 million. So what are you going to do with the 15 million? What is it exactly going to? We know what's going in the building, but for what?
We're going to repair the critical systems. We're going to.
So you were talking about sewage and.
Sewage and the, the air conditioning, the return air, that we're putting in a new fan wall. We've replaced the boilers, the chillers. And we are also going to be resealing all of the windows and replacing the glass. What we're doing is we're, oh, and we're going to be repairing the exterior joint at the same time. What we've done is we've worked directly with the contractors and their subs. We're trying to combine work so that we can save costs. We're negotiating with the contractors. I'm on site and meeting with them on a daily basis. We're making engineering decisions in the field to save time and to save costs. The additional cost will go also to complete the underground tank. There is an underground tank in the parking lot. And that parking lot, underground tank is used for fire suppression for the building. We have to have that in order, in order to pass the commissioning and the fire marshal's inspection when they come out. We will also be using that to finish the floors that have not been completed. Some of the money will also pay for the furniture that needs to go in on, on all the floors. It will also go to replace the failing alarm system that currently keeps the water that's running underneath the building, coming into the sub-basement and then continuing. If it's not fixed, it will continue to rise and then it, it would not be good. So we are going, right now, we're going after all the critical systems. We're going to get this building up and running. We're going to use all of my past experience and we're working with facilities on a daily basis to make the decisions that is best to get this building up and operational. Then, if there is additional funds, we will go after other beautification items. But we're going to focus everything we have on getting the building up and operational, safety and structurally sound.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
And so what's the contingency on this? So there is contingency. So that if, I mean.
I've given two point.
This is your time to shine. So this is the come to Jesus.
I've met, we've met with, we've met with the contractors individually. We've talked about all the work that is remaining. We've talked about the work that's been completed. And we've talked about all the potentials. We've, we've prepared cost estimates. We've had the contractors give us cost estimates for all of these, including what we think could happen, possibly the unknowns. At that point, we've come up with an estimate of 12.5 million. I've added 2.5 million. I, I know that's not standard. Typical standard is 10%. I did a 20% contingency based on the history of this building and the unknowns that keep popping up. And that also covers all the additional ISD securities that were not initially anticipated in the original cost estimate. We, we have new technology today that they didn't have in 1974.
All right. So there might be money left over or you would use this for the beautification part that we didn't fund for the original? So.
I'm going to, I'm going to do everything I can to come back to this board and give you guys back money. Every, every negotiating skill I have, every construction skill I have, every ability I've had in my past to bring this, this job to fruition and return money. That is my goal.
All right. Supervisor Gardea.
If I'm a contractor watching this on, on, online right now, how's a county get away with midway going, oh, we're going to re-engineer this, or we're going to do this, or we're going to do one floor, but I'm not going to finish? How, I mean, how, how, I don't know the rules of, of how county is treated, like with permits. How are we able to get away with that when the general public can't? Because I built my house. I know exactly the struggles of what it is to build a house.
I, I don't know. I've never seen this before in my 28 years of experience.
I, I mean, you guys.
But I've worked in heavy, I apologize. I've worked in heavy highway construction. I come from, I come from a Caltrans training background. I've done the project and program management for the Measure AB program. I, I have never seen this type of combination, this type of phased design. I cannot explain the decisions that were made three years ago. All I can tell you is that what I've seen in the last few months that I've been here, we are going to be making changes. We will be using a Caltrans standard modified specifically for this county moving forward. That is the intent of Capitol and, and General Services Department.
I, if it's the intent of, of the, of the board to look at having an oversight committee, I, I would volunteer for that oversight committee if, if it's something we want to move forward to in the future.
Bring that back. I mean, obviously best practices and I mean, obviously, the CAO's office will look into that. I mean, and bring something back to.
If that's the board's desire.
I mean, that needs to come back on another discussion item. So, I mean, I think that's of interest so that this doesn't happen again, you know, make sure that all the, the.
If I can though, if we are going, if the board chooses to do that, I would go back to what Supervisor Ding had said. We're not the experts. So, you know, maybe adding people. And of course, if you want the board.
How's everybody else doing it?
The board to represent a couple of board members, that's fine, but to have experts on the committee.
Yeah, there's got to be some model somewhere that, I mean, we can do to make sure checks and balances. I mean, obviously.
Absolutely.
You know, budget-wise and oversight and people's authority to do whatever they do needs to be in check, whether it's a two-stage process. I mean, so that, you know, one person doesn't have the authority to go outside. I know the budgeting authority is 199,000, you know what I mean? But I mean, this is something that's obviously should have been budgeted. There should have been an engineer, there should have been a contract. You should, you hand over the keys and you're supposed to get it in product, not hand over the keys for three different people doing three different jobs and they're only supposed to be completed in one year. And now we're in year three. I mean, this just goes against every good building standard. So unfortunately. I mean, this just goes against every good building standard, so unfortunately. Back at you.
Yeah, to the Chair, just, uh, we can bring that up for discussion later.
Okay. So, um, we need a motion in a second to see, you know what I mean, to get this building done and get the district attorney in there and make sure that this doesn't happen again. So, um, I think that's the most important part. We can-
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Call for the vote. Post, motion passes four to one. All right, let's get this building done.
Thank you.
That concludes all the discussion items. Um, we need to go to closed session. Do you, does anybody have, do you wanna do board comments, or do you wanna skip board comments? Okay. At this time, we'll go into closed session at one thirty, and if there's any reportable action, we will come back out.
Okay. I'm not interested in the report.
Okay. Well, then, um, we'll call the meeting, um, completed at one twenty-eight.